Anything going on with the front row?
It's all yours. That is your volunteering for someday.
I'll bring it to you.
Good evening, and welcome to the Samamish City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. If we could please have the clerk give the roll, please.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine. Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshin O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
If we could have Councilmember Stewart lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if House Members Gupta could give the land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqami Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. Is there an emotion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Second. It's been moved to second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now to public comment. And just a reminder, because we have a lovely room full of people here, that we do, per our council rules, have 30 minutes for public comment. So you may discover that you have similar comments. And if that's the case, you may want to stand together or something along those lines. But we'll start with the first person on the list. And we have Sheila Kelly for three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheila Kelly. I live here in Samamish. And I am respectfully requesting that you not allow the town center increase for 2,000 units. I think it's too much for Samamish. We already have traffic issues. And further, I believe that an increase in the height of buildings to be allowed to 150 feet is outlandish. If I wanted to live in Redmond, I would have moved there. So I'd prefer that you, I respectfully ask that you not approve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shelby Franklin?
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Shelley Franklin. This is Tia Towne. We are both long-term residents of Samamish and both have successfully built homes here strictly following all code requirements. We are here tonight to share our ongoing concerns and frustrations with the construction project next door to us. The owner has been exceeding his authority and not complying with his permit, and his doing so has caused damage to my property and potential damage to one or both of our properties going forward. The city of Samamish, excuse me, has been lacking in code enforcement and has allowed months of noncompliance, putting person property and the city of Samamish at risk. Prior to demolition, I contacted the city about tree protection plan for a tree that sat on the shared property line and whose roots extended near out the foundation of the existing residence. I was incorrectly told by the planning department that they were not required to protect the tree. I voiced my concern and the city suggested I work it out with the property owner. The roots were destroyed. Two to three feet of supporting soil was excavated out from under it, and as predicted, the tree fell onto my house doing significant damage. In addition, another healthy tree was marked for removal. However, they later chose not to. It was not then protected, and an excavator was driving 11 inches from its trunk for a period of weeks. It fell on my property as well. Another tree was removed, and while trying to remove its root ball, they cut one to two feet into my property. When the root balls of the fallen trees are removed, they will take a large portion of my land with them. As a part of our going concern, T and I hired at our own expense a certified arborist to look at five trees. The two aforementioned fell during the November 19th storm, and three others had significant structural roots damaged. Please note, none of the five trees mentioned have had tree protection, and two of the five were permitted for removal but were not removed and subsequently not protected. With permission from the contractor and in his presence, our arborist walked the construction site and prepared a report of which you all will be given a copy. He concluded the two trees that fell were a direct result of roots being damaged by the excavation of their supporting soil and destruction of their roots, and one landmark tree also damaged was a high-risk tree that should be removed. We submitted our report to the city. They agreed the high-risk tree should be removed, however, there is no timeline. We are also now very concerned about the trees whose roots have potentially been compromised due to improper protection. What happens if they fall in the next storm? I also had to hire a geotechnical engineer to assess my soil stability and whether my operating oil tank was at risk when the root balls are removed. He suggested they not be removed until the dry season, and he's very concerned about the amount of land I will lose. He also suggested an engineered retaining wall be built and my land backfilled. On December 3rd, the city noted in mybuildingpermit.com a list of corrections that must be completed within 48 hours. As of today's date, they are not all completed. So what are the consequences and repercussions?
Tia, are you going to speak next?
There have been and continue to be co-violations, some of which, Tia, Shelley, and I have reported online, but there are too many to list tonight. Therefore, we've attached a list. Only some of these have been corrected. Just hours ago, we witnessed the new contractor pumping the standing water from the job site through a hole into the silt fencing and into Pine Lake. The city has responded to our code violation reports and enforced some corrections, however, after the fact. We have requested meetings to voice our concerns and received no reply. We have asked if civil penalties will be assessed and been told the civil penalties code is for unlawful removal or damage to significant trees and doesn't apply to trees under an active permit. We ask, what is the point of establishing these guidelines if there are no repercussions for noncompliance? Why are deadlines established but not enforced? We are here this evening as we are at a loss as to how to address all of our concerns going forward and are looking to the city council for guidance. We have tried to get assurance that things will be done correctly going forward, but oftentimes get redirected to another department. However, Joey Tedler in the inspection division has been extremely responsive and very helpful to us. Our questions and concerns extend beyond the inspection department, though. How can we be assured that the city of Samamish will enforce the requirements of this permit proactively to avoid any further damage to person or property? Madam Mayor and council members, we are asking for your guidance in this matter, and we would like to submit our comments to the public record. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Debbie Trine?
Good evening, council. I'm Debbie Trine. I've lived in Samamish since 2010. And I have comments tonight about the presentation on the supplemental EIS for the town center increase to 4,000 units and 150 feet. I'm trying to be brief, so I'm not going to read through everything I submitted to you today. My first concern is that I want to point out for the benefit of the council and for the public that this is absolutely unnecessary. The comprehensive plan that was updated in 2024 has been submitted, and it is already deemed to have met all the requirements, although it's not yet certified. I know there's some basically minor changes that need to be made, but nothing that would support needing to increase the town center density and height. So I don't think that this change, it just needs to be clear that we don't have to do this. So please don't tell us you have to do this for the GMA or for to get your plan promoted. And if I'm wrong, please correct me. The second item I'd like to talk about is, if you're going to study the town center, would you also please add a particular alternative to study reducing the size of the town center? And what I mean by that is not reducing the area that's covered, but if six-story buildings are not financially feasible, which your studies have shown, rather than increase to 15 stories and 4,000 units, why not continue the brownstone townhome style, which is actually feasible, and focus on building those and cottage housing and small, single-family housing? I think that alternative should be studied as an alternative to going big. The other thing that's going on with the town center, and it's a known problem because of the failure of the ability to actually enforce regulations, a lot of the public opinions are formed off of the comprehensive plan and what it looks like, but the regulations don't actually yield that result. And when there's a conflict between the comp plan and the regulations, the regulations win, and we just don't get what we want. So I would ask that you include that in the study as well to look at, how can we modify our regulations so they actually yield the vision that's being put into the comprehensive plan? So, and the last thing is, the staff has provided for you kind of an update of the issues that are in the, or that they think should be added to the EIS if we were based on what the public response was. I want to read to you quickly because I don't have time. Oh, I don't have time. I'll pass it to someone else to pass on to you. But I'd like those of you who are here because of these very same issues to please raise your hand.
Next, we have Paul Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Paul Quinn. I live in Samamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual who cares about fairness in how Samamish solid waste customers are charged for disposal. Right now, we charge our residents and businesses for disposal based on the size of the container being picked up. The effect of this message is to say, we don't care about how much is put in or diverted from the landfill. This approach is unfair as it charges all people based on the size of the container rather than on what's in the container. We know this is wrong, as our water, gas, electricity charges are based on what we use rather than on the size of the wires and pipes connecting us to service. Handout number one I've emailed you shows a graphic of the trend of the monthly cost for garbage disposal for your single-family residences. It continues to go higher and higher, and you know it will continue to do so because of King County landfill costs. What's worse than the trend line is this city doesn't allow residences or businesses to reduce their costs for disposal by properly diverting materials for recycling and compost. In fact, you unfairly increase costs for folks who work hard, sort recyclables, compost food scraps, by charging them the very same as others who are indifferent. This is unfair. It's wrong, and it can and should be changed by weighing the refuse each customer creates. To begin this change, I recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal, which will help significantly improve the city's diversion rates. Handout number three in that packet I sent you shows how Smart Disposal works in some detail. I'll now briefly describe it. Smart Disposal weighs each container picked up by the hauler at each single-family home. This system uses postcards mailed to each resident, provides specific data for each resident, including their landfill diversion rate per pickup, how the use of the utility compares to others in their community. I provided you handout number four to show an example postcard report residents would receive. This system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset toward making better choices. We know that feedback through measurement works because water, electricity, and gas are all metered, helping us to moderate our own use. Smart Disposal provides the meters our disposal utility needs. What I recommend you today is the city conduct a proof-of-concept study on the feasibility of Smart Disposal. I provided you a proof-of-concept project plan that shows for about $50,000, the city could demonstrate the contents of residential containers can be weighed with accuracy and efficiency with no extra work by the hauler's driver. The city could also partner with another city to lower this cost by half. Metering and reporting to residents what we dispose of at the curb provides fairness to help us abate the increase in cost of disposal. The council should support fair pricing for our disposal utility. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Goulding?
Good evening. My name is Jim Goulding. Been a resident since 2011. And I'm here to speak what I think most people are going to speak about tonight, adamantly against 4,000 units going into the town center. I can't say it any other way. I've talked to over 100 people, haven't heard one person yet in favor of that. You are here to serve the people in this room and in this city. If 4,000 go through, we will all know who voted for that. And we, as a group, and many of us, will try to make sure that it will never happen again. This is not a threat. It's just sensibility, what we're looking at here, everybody. 4,000 people and 150-foot building in that area is not right. It's taller than the trees. As somebody stated earlier, if I wanted to live in Samamish or actually Redmond, I could go look at the tall buildings or Bellevue. It's not what we as residents want. And hopefully, you will all listen to all the constituents here today. I also understand the EIS study, over 200 people responded to that, which is huge. And I think 94% are against it. There's a lot going on here in this city, and we just want to make sure that it stays manageable for all of us, that we have the quality of life that we want. We, like I said, driving, how about if we have an accident or earthquake or anything? How are we going to get out of here? Everybody saw what happened at the bomb cyclone. The roads were backed up. Nobody was moving. And that's what's going to happen if we have 8,000-plus people into that little, what is it, four, four blocks on each side gets to move in there. So take a look at that. I'm asking you. I also was up here last time, and I brought up something about the city paying $5 million for a piece of property. I think it was valued at 1.5 million. Everybody's like, where'd you get this information? How do you know about that? We still have not heard anything more about that. Where is that $5 million going to? And then again, $6 million to help the developer build the road? That is against my principles, $6 million to help these developers. If they can't make it work, they can't make it work. But we should not be subsidizing this. And I'll keep throwing more money on it, and then adding a 6% utility tax to help pay for this. It drives me crazy. But I appreciate you listening to me. I'm passionate about it, and appreciate you taking the thoughts seriously. Thanks.
Thank you. Anna Yorba?
Good evening, council members. I'm Anna Yorba, resident of Samamish. I'm here to ask you to direct the staff not to continue to examine the increased density in the town center. I respect your wish to increase the amount of affordable housing, if that is your goal, but not at the cost of decreasing our quality of life. We love our home. We've made progress in building the town center. We've satisfied the GMA requirements. Please tell us how an additional 2,000 residential units is beneficial to anyone other than the real estate developers. The addition of 4,000 or more new residents will negatively impact water quality, air quality, traffic congestion, utilities, public services, school crowding, and loss of tree canopy. These factors have already been considered in the existing town center final environmental impact statement, and the 4,000-unit increase was rejected. Since the town center will not include high-wage employment, new residents will commute outside the city, adding to air pollution and traffic congestion. With the lack of affordable housing below the 50% AMI level, local workers and service jobs will still not be able to afford housing. Our geographic situation, intensifying climate extremes, and earthquake risk make emergency evacuation tenuous, even with the current population. The recent Holly Way corridor study showed the potential for landslides and how increased service levels would require huge expense for mitigation. You have said that this proposal is merely a study and not a decision. Why would you pay for further studies unless you intend to bring about a certain result? The costs in staff time, consultant fees, and associated expenditures will drive the proposed increase as a sunk cost. The outcome of this sunk cost fallacy is an unwillingness to abandon a course of action because we have invested heavily in it, even when it is clear that a different course would be better. If recent spending is a guide, we could spend millions to underwrite thousands of market rate units in hope of gaining a handful of affordable units. If our goal is to produce more affordable housing, let's take another look at how we meet these goals. The increase in anticipated taxes produced by development may not offset the expense to pay for it or to mitigate the negative impacts on our quality of life. The citizens recently voted down a bond measure to alleviate overcrowding in schools. A utility tax is now on the table because revenues are not enough to cover expenses. It's time to stop the bleeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Steele?
Hi, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to make a quick comment. I decided to just say something that I was thinking about when I was walking today, and that is, in this brilliant and complicated and work-in-progress place that we call America, I feel very lucky and grateful that regardless of how anybody votes, once the elections, our free and fair elections, happen, that you, I know that you are representing all of the citizens, the residents of the city or the state or the, well, and I feel very lucky for that fact. And I, well, maybe not tonight, but I think sometimes it seems that no one is paying attention and no one is taking the time to research and do what we should do as a resident or a citizen to understand what's going on. And lives are busy, and emails are sent and not responded to, and I think it's challenging to not feel discouraged and give up. And I just want to come with thanks to you all, because you all have busy lives, too, and you've chosen to spend part of your precious life in service to our city. And I would encourage you to continue to communicate and to listen even more deeply to voices of all the residents, because I feel lucky in knowing that you do represent all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Turnout?
Good evening. I reciprocate what she said, and I also really want to encourage you to get back in with that study about the recycling and doing it based on the weight. I think that would be a great future thing to work on some more, and I'm going to be going forward finding more information about that. I'm also talking, representing all of us. Can you wave your hands again if you're here to support the trees? And to say, please, you've already done these studies. We don't want 4,000 dwellings. We don't want 150-foot buildings. And like we were discussing, personally, I voted for all of you because you were progressive environmentalists, and that was your way that you presented yourself. And I want that so badly, to be able to trust the city council members that are going to represent me and all the other people in Samamish who couldn't be here tonight. And just like that survey showed, the JOT form, 200 people responded. You must have been cheering in your living rooms when you noticed that, and only 17 said they wanted it. And what they did want as a desired community outcome included some of these things that I'm going to read. Preservation of legacy mature trees, connection of wildlife corridors, and careful road improvements that do not involve having all this extra stuff that the developers don't have to pay for. Open water, stormwater retention with maybe a fountain and some trails, similar to Windsor Green, and less development. And so I think that you're hearing this loud and clear. As you represent all of us as seven very important people, I hope you will choose to vote, even if it's not quite what you personally would want, but you are doing it as our representatives, because you've heard us over and over again. And I'm sure when you see me, you give a deep sigh inside yourself. She's back again. Good grief. Because we really need you to represent us and do what we all are asking. One of the things I would love to propose again, if you're still on the fence, back in 2005 or '06, we did a YMCA advisory ballot, and city council people can put that initiative in and create an advisory ballot. So if that's something that would help convince you, so that you can hear from the 58,000 other people that maybe haven't written to you, I really encourage you to do that before you ever consider anything more than what's already on the table. Thank you for listening.
And thank you. Council, we've reached the 30 minutes, but if you're willing, we could go a little further.
Actually, I think we have seven more minutes.
Oh, I am completely wrong. Thank you for correcting me, and thank you for tracking that, too. In that case, seven minutes. We've got Cookie, Karen, Richard, Heather, and Diljit. So that's what I have on this list. And if there's people online, we may not be able to get to them. Cookie, please. Kui, sorry. Sorry. Sorry, I knew that.
Good evening, council. My name is Kui Goulding, and I've lived here since 20, well, 13 years, actually. So I am here tonight to express my concerns, along with all of my friends here. Raise your hands, about the opposition to the proposed increase in the town center from 2,000 residential units to 4,000. I know you've heard this tonight. You've heard it from a bunch of people. I really hope you're still listening. In addition, I oppose the approval of the height increase to 150 feet or approximately 13 stories. That's huge. If you approve an additional 2,000 units in the town center and approve the increased building height, how is this a positive scenario for anybody who lives here? And I'm still trying to figure it out. This is what will change, right? More pollution, less tree canopy, which continues to decline in our community every day, more traffic. And if my numbers are correct, I believe it's about 40,000 more cars on the road daily in Samamish, based on the number of people you want to put here. Gridlock, water concerns. Do we have enough water to handle all these people? We've had droughts the last, I believe, two to three years. We'll have an eyesore with a huge 150-foot building or more. Why would we want buildings that are taller than our trees? It's not attractive. And most importantly, these changes will affect people's lives. These people here, how does the city expect residents to evacuate, and I say when, because it will come, there's a natural disaster such as a wildfire or an earthquake? The city has received 200 written responses about these potential changes to town center. And as was mentioned earlier, only 17 people were in favor. The citizens have voiced their concerns, and I hope the council and city planners put the citizens first and not the developers. Please consider this. Don't make this happen. Thank you.
Karen Haring?
Sorry, friends. I was at the last part of the list. So just so you know, I'm here to ditto everything they're saying. I'm here to ditto everything they're saying and the comments that I already gave you on paper. Those are very important, and they are not my words. They're the rest of the community who aren't here. Don't ignore them, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And Richard Johnson.
Richard Johnson, I'm a resident of Samamish. I wanted to thank this council and the previous councils for all the hard work they've put into the Samamish Town Center planning. I do just have one question. With 4,000 housing units in the Town Center, according to my estimates, looking at the envisioned plan, this would lead to an additional 3,000 commuter trips daily. I don't understand why this has not appeared in any of the planning documents. The basis for this is that in Samamish, on average, residents have 1.5 workers. Samamish is not an anomaly in this respect. In King County, there are 1.7 workers. So if you have 4,000 households, you have 6,000 people looking for work. That's a lot. Where are they going to find those jobs? Not in Samamish. According to the professionals, Samamish is projected to gain 730 jobs. Not a year, by 2020 -- sorry, 2044. It's in the city's plan, by the way. For perspective, Samamish currently has fewer than 6,800 jobs, so adding 6,000 is a pretty big number. I appreciate that this council and the previous councils have been concerned about people who work in Samamish but could not afford to live in Samamish. Currently, we have 5,920 people who do commute into Samamish and work in our community. However, fewer than 25% of those are in the categories of most concern: education, retail, and food services. Let's pretend, that a moment, that every one of those people decided to move to Town Center. That would still leave 4,000 people in the Town Center looking for work. That's how I get the number. I haven't seen this in the documents. It seems like this is a pretty significant amount. I will point out that the numbers look a lot better if the Town Center were limited to 2,000 rather than 4,000 people. Almost all of those extra commuting trips that are required at 4,000 would not be required at 2,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather, it looks like Murphy Ross, I'm not sure.
You'll have to excuse me, I'm really sick today. I have my mask on. So I'm Heather Murphy-Rains. I've lived here for 25 years, and I'm ashamed to admit that I haven't really been involved at the town level here. And with what's going on in the world right now, I've decided that I should get involved. And I'm disheartened to say that I've been not happy with the way that Samamish is going right now. When we moved here 25 years ago from the Bay Area, we were in love with the Emerald Forest, the schools, the beauty, and the small-town feel. This is why we came. And when I attended one of the first Town Hall meeting sessions, we brainstormed, and what we were brainstorming for was a movie theater and an off -- a hardware store. That's what we wanted. Some restaurants other than pizza, you know? Movies -- what do we want? Outdoor pool, which we never got for the swim teams, which we never got. And a senior center, which we never got. And you know what was in all those brainstorming sessions? What wasn't there was a tower that was 15 stories and 4,000 housing units. We never -- that didn't come up, ever. Because we knew back then that this was a -- 228th was already lamloched, and we didn't have access to freeways, and we wanted that small-town feel. So then I just sort of let it go by the wayside, and I got -- let life get in the way, and I wasn't involved. And I let things, you know, I did PTA stuff, and I went to my business. And now I sort of came back, and I read all those 200 responses today. I sat there for two hours today, and I read through every single one of those responses. And what I saw was kids that were on Lake Washington having a two-hour commute on a bus already. And how can that be when you're going to put, what, another 4,000 to 8,000 kids right plunk in the middle, which means that those kids in Sahali are going to get another how many hours commute? You're not listening and paying attention to your constituents that are here now. You need to pay attention to who's here now, not -- I understand you're planning for the future, but the quality of life needs to be for us now. We voted for you. We believed that you were about the environment. We believed in you. So please believe in us when we're saying we need to also have quality of life. We need to make sure that our kids are safe when there's this question about wildfires, and questions about landslides, and questions about earthquakes. Because I've read that report in 2019 where it said that we had 1.7 times the risk of paradise. I drove the 228th during that last storm where it was gridlocked. What's going to happen?
Thank you. And the last one on this list is Diljit. Safi.
My name is Diljit Sethi, and I'm a 20-year-plus resident of Samamish. I'm an architect and a planner, and I do design Town Centers and commercial shopping malls for a living. This project caught my attention. It is the first time here I'm speaking about it, mainly because I was a little concerned about the density, the increase in density, rather, I would say, is significant. And more than that, a lot of people have already mentioned that, so I'm not going to repeat it, but what really caught my attention was the increase in commercial retail space. I understand it's about 400,000 square feet plus an office space of 130,000 square feet, bringing up to 530,000 square feet of office and retail. Just to give you a context, Bellevue Square Mall is about 1.2 million square feet. So what we're looking at is half a mall coming up here, in some form or the other. Bellevue Mall has 200 retailers, including the Ankerstros. A typical Walmart is about 110,000 square feet, Costco is about 120,000 square feet, and Target is about 125,000 square feet. So just to give you a sense of how much retail we are trying to put in here, you're talking about 400,000 square feet, that's what I gather. I seriously request you to reconsider this. I understand the pressure from developers, as I feel from my clients, to monetize these projects to the maximum extent possible through transfer of development rights, maximum FAR, putting in more commercial, decreasing the size of units, and so on and so forth. A 15-story-tall building in this Samamish is not going to do -- is going to do disservice to the city and the residents who are already living here. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the list in the room.
Those who have pre-registered to do online public comment, please raise your hand if you wish to comment.
Hello, this is Mary Wichter, Samamish, 24 years. I typed in some information I think a lot of people aren't familiar with, how much the Town Center has been studied. But we've been growing without Town Center for the last 25 years, and we've been spreading, sprawling, and hitting into critical areas. That means you're losing trees, you're hurting the streams and the environment, and you're putting hazard areas at risk. It's much better to put higher density into planned designated central areas. In fact, Director David Pyle of the Department of Community Development also spoke just at last week's Sustainability Commission on the need for compact development, taller and smaller footprint structures, and the need for mid-rise buildings, as he covered the city of Samamish in the most recently adopted 2024 Comprehensive Plan. We also, with the city, are at a financial imbalance that truly requires addressing. We can't just keep raising taxes and trying to add utilities, because the utility tax won't even fix the problem. What we need to do is grow with Town Center now. Town Center was adopted as a tool in starting in 2008. If you think of a four-to-one ratio, smaller, different, diverse, and lifecycle-type housing plus affordable housing is a ratio factor you need to see, use, and understand, because it truly makes dollars and cents. A mix of affordable housing plus market-rate housing that's missing, and would include some senior housing, has the effect related to traffic generation as follows. You can put 6,000 units into Town Center, and that's equal to about 1,500 single-family homes. And that's what's being asked and suggested by those that have studied the numbers and been around for years. You can also put 8,000 units in Town Center, that would equal about 2,000 single-family homes. And if you put just 4,000 units in Town Center, that equals about the impact of 1,000 single-family homes. In the first study that the city of Samamish did for the Comprehensive Plan -- sorry. The preferred alternative said Town Center could add between 3,650 and 8,000 units over and above the 2,000 that were planned for, without increasing car generation trip beyond what the Environmental Impact Study anticipated. Therefore, there could be 5,650 to 10,000 housing units for Town Center without going on the planning for that EIS. I've also been attending Water and Sewer District meetings since 2015, three times a month. Their 2022-2023 wastewater comp plan says they already have a capacity for an additional 13,000 units. In other comments that people have sent in linked to a Fair and Peers, which is a traffic study, there was a number one and number two. They have studies from the study done in 2007. All of the King County permitted housing units that were supposed to be targeted for Samamish were built, so that study is still valid. The Comprehensive Plan from 2007 also has a transportation element that called for 3,000 single-family homes, which is exactly what happened, and the city's first Comprehensive Plan was built and was done in 2003. The bottom line is there have been virtually no new developments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I will now promote the second commenter.
Good evening, City Council, Paul Stickney here, and all those in the room. Appreciate all the comments. I'm talking tonight about citywide housing imbalance, not only Town Center, on a citywide scale. And a conclusion that I've come to is that if we, as a community, meet internal needs for what I call A, B, and C, affordable and market-rate shortages over the next 20 years at about only 80% of the lowest threshold of internal needs, the effects will be equivalent to about 1/3 of the growth pace that's happened in Samamish from 2000 through 2024. And FYI, that's only about 1/6 of the pace of growth from 1980 to 1999 under King County. A housing is affordable housing from 175,000 to 500,000. B is market-rate housing from 500,000 to 1.4 million. C are condominiums and townhomes priced above 1.5. And D is large, single-family homes priced over 1.5. As a community, we have an extreme shortage of A, B, and C housing relative to our economic and demographic and workforce housing needs over cycle of life and for sustainable generations. We have a vast oversupply of D housing using these metrics. In mid-2023, I turned in a compilation of articles to the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force predicated on numbers I've been talking about at recent City Council members for A, B, and C housing. I've recently reassessed the financial parts of those. One was spot-on, one was low, and one was high. The city will receive for about $185 million in one-time revenues. Homeowners that choose to downsize and stay will each save about $40,000 a year on average, and the city will net about $15 million in renewable, reoccurring revenue every year. The comments I turned in today and over the last few months outline ways to optimize A, B, and C housing to show why the range exists that I have asserted it is. That Town Center can handle more housing than what the EIS says, and there's many other places in the city. So to me, it's exciting that we have the ability to meet 80% of the lowest threshold of belated A, B, and C shortage housing with only 1/3 the effective growth we've seen over the last 25 years. Appreciate the chances.
Thank you.
That's all for pre-registered commenters. A note is if you want to provide online testimony, pre-register by 5 o'clock the day of the meeting at cityclerk@samamish.us. Thank you.
And thank you. Next, we will move to -- actually, I'm looking for a motion for the consent calendar, to approve the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Next, we will be moving towards public hearings. So we'll hear first from our Finance Director, and this will be a discussion implementing a 6% utility tax and use tax on brokered natural gas. So Vicky Carlson, I'll leave it to you then.
Yes, thank you very much. I just need to get my presentation set up here, so give me just a minute, please.
While she's getting set up, I'll just thank everybody in the room. We do appreciate you folks coming in and giving public comment. It's important that we hear you, and it's a great opportunity, so thank you.
All right, I think I'm set up here. So good evening, Vicky Carlson, Finance Director, for the record. So as we mentioned at the retreat on February 8th, we're bringing the draft legislation forward tonight and opening the public hearing on the implementation of the utility tax. Tonight, I'm going to be reviewing the same financial information along with the fiscal task force recommendations. This is all going to be familiar to you, as it's the same information we presented at the retreat, but it is another opportunity for the -- to hear the community message and to weigh in on it. So our general fund, as we have mentioned many times, is structurally imbalanced. As of this year, ongoing revenues are not covering ongoing expenditures, and this is after budget reductions that have been made for the last couple of years. We are using existing fund balance to close the gap, and this is not sustainable. To help understand these fiscal challenges that we're facing and how we might address them, the city contracted with Baker Tilly back in 2023 and put together a 10-member community task force who validated the structural imbalance and brought forward a solution that achieves fiscal sustainability for at least 10 years. The task force developed a three-phased recommendation. The city implemented the first phase, which is amounts to about $8.9 million in general fund budget reductions for the biennium. The second phase of the task force recommendations involves council action on a utility tax, and the third phase is a voter-approved measure. The recommendation was a Metropolitan Park District for long-term financial sustainability. So the graph on this slide illustrates the current structural imbalance. It shows how ongoing revenues are not only not covering ongoing expenditures, but that over time, the gap gets larger every year. It's not a best practice, so we do need to take action now to achieve long-term fiscal So these next few slides are from the presentation on the draft Fiscal Sustainability Plan from November of 2023. On this slide are some of the contributing factors that have led to the structural imbalance. Property tax, which is now about 62% of our total general fund revenues, are capped at 1% growth plus new construction. That 1% increase for 2025 equated to approximately $300,000. And at the same time, expenditures are forecast to grow to over 4% each year. To date, the city has not utilized other revenue options that are available to cities, and we have significant unfunded capital improvement needs. and we have significant unfunded capital improvement needs. So in the summer of 2023, these 10 community members volunteered to help the city solve the structural imbalance. These 10 individuals dedicated significant time and effort getting up to speed on city finances and the city's budget imbalance. They and their consultant considered many possible revenue strategies currently available to cities. In addition to looked at cost reductions and reducing levels of service, the options that were considered are listed on the right-hand side for different revenue options. So the task force did take a deep dive into potential budget strategies, and that resulted in three phases where the entire community has responsibility for the solution. The task force said that the city needed to reduce its expenditures first before asking the community to do its part. So the first strategy was $1 million in reductions over the course of three years. Since then, the city has reduced its general fund budget by over $8.9 million, going well beyond the recommendation. And as Phase Two, the task force recommended that council use our councilmatic authority to implement a utility tax starting in 2026. And finally, they recommended that the city put a Metropolitan Park District proposal to the voter, and we'll be discussing that, what those options look like later on this year. On the capital side, they recommended any excess fiscal capacity generated by the new revenue be put towards investment and capital projects. So as I mentioned, the city went through the budget reduction exercises both in 2023 and 2024 as part of building the 25-2026 biennial budget. We went well beyond the $1 million reduction recommended by the task force. Total general fund reductions exceeded $8.9 million for the biennium. So the graph on this slide is what the budget would have looked like if the budget reductions had not been made. The $8.9 million is a biennial amount, and this graph shows it annualized. Yes, the budget is growing, but not as fast as it would have if the budget reductions are not, had not been made. We do have inflationary cost increases that, for the remaining budget, we can't control. So moving into the utility tax itself, as a reminder of what a utility tax is, it is a tax on the gross operating revenues that utilities provide, the utilities providers burn from operations conducted within the city limits. Revenue is unrestricted, meaning we can use it for any lawful governmental purpose. The tax can be applied to all utilities, but the tax rates for electricity, gas, and phone are capped at 6% unless voter approval for a higher rate, and we're not recommending that. We're recommending 6% across the board, which is what the task force also recommended. So this slide shows an estimate of what a utility tax could generate if it was 6% across all utilities. These numbers are estimated using Mercer Island as a peer city and fairly representative of the mix of commercial and residential parcels. Baker Tilly took all of Mercer Island's utility tax revenues, determined a per capita revenue generated for each 1% of the tax levied, then applied that to Samamish's per capita amounts. It's not a perfect methodology, but without data from the utilities themselves, this does give a rough estimation of what the utility tax could generate. I do want to be clear, though, that until we actually start collecting the tax, we won't know exactly how much it's going to generate. And as we've mentioned many times, the utility tax alone is not a permanent solution to solving the structural imbalance. It only solves the structural imbalance for a short time because the utility tax alone won't solve the imbalance. We aren't trying to get to a specific revenue number. We're trying to maximize what's available to us to ensure that ongoing revenues are covering ongoing expenditures until we can get to Phase Three, which is asking the voters to approve a Metropolitan Park District. The recommendation is 6% because that's within councilmatic authority, and again, it's what the task force recommended. But even 6% is not enough. It gets the budget right side up for the next couple of years, and it gets us to where we can put a vote in front of the voters back in 2028. And then the additional revenue that comes in those first couple of years would then bridge the gap until we actually could start collecting tax for the Metropolitan Park District. And just to kind of put a little perspective here, if the vote happens in the last half of 2028, it takes time for the county to actually levy the taxes, and so the Metropolitan Park District would not actually collect taxes until 2030 at the earliest. And that's assuming that the vote passes the first time we put it on the ballot. So we also have to have that cushion in case it doesn't receive a positive vote the first So this, this slide is an example of what a household could expect to pay on a month and annual basis. So the top line is if your utility bills add up to $300 a month or $3,600 annually, you would pay about $18 a month or $216 annually. And on the high end of the slide, if your total utility bills add up to $900 a month or $10,800 annually, you'd pay about $54 a month in utility taxes or $648 annually. This is a map showing, on the right-hand side, this is King County. The gray area is the unincorporated area, and King Counties are, counties are not able to levy a utility tax. The cities in blue, which is most of the cities, do levy a utility tax. It's in place right now. The areas in green are the cities that do not have a utility tax, and you can see there's very few of them at this point. The chart on the left of the slide shows our neighboring cities that have a utility tax and what the rates are for this year. Couple increases I want to point out. Issaquah has a utility tax, and starting in 2025, they increased from 3% to 4.5% on water, sewer, and surface water, and it's going to go up on the same utilities to 6% in 2026. Redmond added a utility tax on water, sewer, and stormwater effective this year. Prior to this year, those three utilities did not have a utility tax. And just an interesting, looking at other cities and the utility taxes, I did some quick research with the assistance of our attorney. Some cities have had some form of a utility tax in place for many years. If we're reading the codes correctly, just as a couple of examples, Redmond has had some form of a utility tax since 1970, Issaquah since 1978, and it looks like Mercer Island and Bellevue have had a utility tax since 1995. So this is a revenue source for cities that's been used for many, many years in a number of cities. So the slide, this graph is the general fund forecast and what it would look like if the utility tax starts next year. Again, you'll see that the utility tax does not fully solve the structural imbalance. This gap at the, where we have excess revenue the first couple of years would then be used in the out years to bridge until the Metropolitan Park District could be in place and taxes collected, assuming a positive vote. So in to offset the burden of the utility tax on our lower-income households, we are proposing creating a utility tax rebate program. The goal is to make this a low-barrier entry for residents and low burden to staff to administer. So to make things simple, rather than staff reviewing tax returns and other documentations, we rely on residents' participation in other low-income programs as proof of their eligibility. One program would be PSC Help, which is a low-barrier program available to anyone under 80% of the area meeting income. And the other is King County Property Tax Exempt Program for seniors and persons with disabilities, which allows us to reach the seniors on a fixed income. If a resident can submit proof that they're enrolled in one of these two programs, which our research shows is about 800 residents right now and have lived in Samamish for one year, the city would provide a rebate. Cities with similar rebate setup programs typically provide around $100, and that's what our proposal is as well. It's important to remember that this program is just for the utility tax. Most utilities have their own assistant programs as well for the utility bill itself. Just one example, Sandplat offers 70% off water and sewer base rate for those under the 80% AMI. So if a resident is receiving discounts on their utility bills, they're also paying utility tax less on a smaller bill, so the two programs would act in tandem with each So the ordinance to levy the utility tax includes a rate of 6% on all utilities and includes the low-income rebate program. There is companion legislation for the use tax on brokered natural gas, and just to give you a little bit of history on that one, back in 1996, 1986, the federal government deregulated the natural gas industry, allowing large customers to bypass gas utilities and bargain directly with independent brokers. Some of the sales are no longer taxable under existing state statute. So in order to respond to that, the state legislature enacted new legislation which allows cities that tax natural gas to impose an equivalent use tax on brokered natural gas sales that are not otherwise subject to the utility tax. This companion legislation simply ensures that all natural gas regardless of the delivery method is taxed at the 6%. And finally, we do need to adopt administrative rules that will help deal with how we handle overpayments, late payments, nonpayments, et cetera. Rather than write these administrative rules to be specific to the utility tax, I want to write them as a separate section of our code so they can be implied to any other tax that the city may wish to levy in the future, kind of seeing that crystal ball and trying to make things easier on future staff. So I'll be working with our city attorney to draft a solid set of rules that you'll have in front of you later this year to adopt because we do have to have those in place prior to January 1st if the utility tax is adopted. The utility tax is the first tax that we'll be administering ourselves, so we don't currently have these rules in place, but we do need them. We wanted to get the draft legislation in front of you as quickly as possible so you could see what it looked like and start reviewing, but we are going to be proposing a few friendly amendments to the legislation that you will see in the next draft, and the amendments pertain to these administrative rules. Again, I want to pull that out of the utility tax and have its own separate code section. This slide just shows how many times we have talked about the utility tax. I believe the first, the first touch on the utility tax was back in September of 2023 when the task force first recommended the utility tax to council. And then in November of that same year, the city manager presented the draft fiscal sustainability plan, which again talked about a 6% utility tax as one of the legs of the stool to work towards fiscal sustainability. And then through the budget process, September through November, the utility tax was discussed during budget development. October and December of 2024, there was social media messaging. December, there was a news article, and there's going to be another one drop in the next newsletter that's coming out. And then, of course, we talked about it on February 8th at the council retreat. And next up, so this is the timeline. So tonight is getting the draft legislation in front of you for your review. It's also opening the public hearing. We plan to have the public comments open through March 18th, so full month of public comment, and then closing the public hearing and adopting legislation on March 18th. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions and turn it over to the mayor to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Does council have clarifying questions? So not debate, just clarifying questions. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, is there anything preventing us, if we do some sort of a rebate program or discount program, is that $100 a year just a kind of an arbitrary number so we could set that at 50% or 75% of someone's taxes if we wanted to?
Yeah, we chose $100 because that's what Issaquah, our neighbor house, in place is $100, and it makes it easier for staff to administer if it's just a flat amount.
Councilmember Trine.
Vicky, so the 2025-2026 budget currently is 134-plus million?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I could look quickly.
And, and in the agenda bill, as you're looking that up, in the agenda bill, so this moves along, in the agenda bill, you, you state as one of the whereas is, I think it's one, two, three, four, number five, the city implemented budget reduction as part of the task force recommended, recommendation amounting to 8.9 million in general fund budget reductions for the 2025-2026 biennium. So if, if the price tag to run the city for two years is 100, the budget is 134 million, that means before the cuts, the budget, if my numbers are right, was 143,222,000. Correct?
I, if that's the correct number, I'm looking at the budget, and I think it was 128 million for the general fund.
How did you get 128?
Again, I'd, I'd have to look up the, the actual budget document. I don't have it open right now. But if you give me a minute, if you give me a minute, I can pull it up really quickly.
Yeah. Because if I look at, okay, so maybe I'll take a different approach then. So '21 to '22, the actuals was 103. '23 to '24, the actual was, this is millions, by the way, 103 million. Actual was 115 million. The budget in 2023-2024, from the numbers I was pulling from the documents that you provided to us, was budgeted at 125 million. The actual was 10 million less. Good on us, right? And I don't have the numbers for the budgeted item for '21, '22, but I think it was 109 or so, and we only, actual was 103. And so kind of what I'm looking at is, so if it was 143 and we reduced it down to 134, my question would be, is the actual going to be closer to maybe 125?
The actual for 2025, 2026?
Yeah, just an estimate, because I know.
It's very early in the year. At this point, it, it's two months into a 24-month budget, so we, we can't estimate what the year's going to look like. We don't know what.
Yeah. Okay, so let's just leave it at 134. So, so when I look at the last, so when I look at what the task force presented in the whereas, one, two, three, four, number four, it says here that reduces city's budget by 1 million over three years. That's what we're telling the public, that the, the task force asked us to do that. And then what I'm looking at is I don't see a reduction of $1 million over the, now I get it, it's a biennium, so it's only two years. So are we looking at, and maybe this is a city manager's question, are we looking at that, hey, we've got an increase here of 12, shit, 19 million? Okay, let's call it 12 to 15, but it's about 19 million. And so it's, it's not going down. And so how can I go to the residents and say, yeah, we've met Phase One, when, yeah, you reduced it by 8.9, but that's a, that's just budgeting. We're looking at, you understand, I think, I think we, I have a real problem here. Understanding, and maybe this is just me, but I believe that the task force asks us to, to look at, before you go asking for 6% utility tax, that we, over a three-year period of time, reduce the budget by a million bucks. That's not an easy task. Some of the people in that committee said it should be $5 or $6 million. Okay, so why is, I don't understand why our budget isn't like 125 million for the biennium. Or if it's going to be more for the next two years, then where do I cut the $1 million? Are, are you going to come back, or is the plan then to come back in 2026, or 20, yeah, in 2026 for the 2027 budget? That is going to be $1 million less than the 134. Because then you would be meeting what I believe is what they're trying to do here.
So I am looking at the budget document that's online, and I'm looking at page 102 of the budget document, which summarizes general fund expenditures by department. The total expenditures for the 2025-2026 budget is $128 million. That's the total budget, including non-departmental, which is the capital transfers. That is after removing the $8.9 million. Part of it was done through a 2024 mid-biennium adjustment for the prior biennium. The rest of it was done as the 2025-2026 budget was drafted. We, after the budget was drafted, we took numerous whacks at the budget to reduce it. The last whack through, we reduced over $2 million, and that was removing certain items from the budget. There's no meeting expenses. Overtime was reduced. We took out out-of-state training, so we have less training available to staff. We removed the holiday lighting on City Hall campus and a bunch of other reductions that totaled $2 million, in addition to some other reductions. So all of those reductions are out of this budget figure of $128 million.
It's 128 plus?
128, 462, 656.
So that's still, okay, so then where's the million, so where's the million dollars then, in, over the next three years?
Councilmember Trine, if, if I may, I want to clarify something because I think we're conflating a couple of things. I'm looking at the task force recommendations, and it was to find reductions in expenditures totaling 1 million over three years, starting in 2025. If you'll recall, we decided not to wait until that, and we started in the mid-bi, in 2024, we adjusted the budget down by $2.4 million, thereby, well, excuse me, pardon me, I seem to be losing my voice, going well over the $1 million mark in the 2024 budget adjustment. And then we took out additional dollars that Vicky was just referring to as part of the, in reducing costs. So I think there's, we're using two different terms here, but in terms of meeting the, the, what the task force asked the city to do, I think we, it asked for a 1 million reduction, and we've gone to 8.9 million that we can directly identify, and there's other more indirect costs that aren't counted, but the 8.9 million we can directly identify.
All right, I'd like to see the itemized on that one then, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Any more questions from council? If not, I have a quick question for Vicky, and I don't know if you have this or not, but I was remembering back to the retreat, and you had a great slide that talked about the essential services that a city provides. A big, I mean, 50% of our budget certainly goes to police and fire, but then there was a list, or a whole host of essential services that cities must provide, and then there was a much smaller list of non-essential. And as I recall, I mean, it's not essential, unfortunately, it's termed "non-essential", but to many of us, it feels essential because it's parks. And so what I think is hard to understand unless you can actually see that slide is just how many services the city actually provides that are considered essential to running a city and keeping it, you know, functional vis-à-vis the things that are considered quote-unquote "non-essential." So if you can go from memory- So if you can go from memory, which is very unfair, unless you happen to have that slide, what percent of our budget goes towards essential services?
So I don't have the percent of the budget that goes to each of this, but I can give you a high level and then come back to you with a response on that one.
Perfect.
So the city, the city services are classified into four types. So there's legally required, functionally required, required but we can adjust the levels of service, and then not required, but what's highly valued by the community members and elected leaders. So those are the four categories. Legally required types of service include city legal services, city attorney, prosecution, public defense, permitting services, public records, long-range planning, just to name a few of them, and public services, right, public safety service, police and fire. That's under the legally required bucket. Under the functionally required, because we have these other services that we're required to provide, we have functionally required. So we have to pay our bills, right? We have to pay payroll. We have to have information technology to offer these programs. City facilities and maintenance has to happen. Fire station maintenance is an example. Those are the functionally required, because we're providing all these other services. Types of service that are required, but we can adjust the level of service, is we could adjust police and fire. Nobody wants to, but that is a service that we could adjust the level of service. Street maintenance is another example. In fact, we did do an adjustment to level of service when it came to snow and ice removal. That was part of the budget reductions that went into effect. This biennium was redo, we reduced the snow and ice removal to a lower level of service. And then on the city service types that are not required but highly valued, that's the parks and open space. It's the recreation, human services funding, communications, lifeguards, public art funding, city commissions. So those are the buckets, and those are examples of the types of services that fall into each one. I'd have to do a little more digging. I don't have the budget that falls into each one of those categories in front of me.
I think that's just super helpful to understand, kind of just how many services that are considered essential or required by law the cities have to provide. So that is where a lot of our expense actually goes, and a lot of those expenses, we don't actually control in terms of our ability to, you know, I can't go in and change the police union contract, for example.
Exactly.
Okay. The other thing that I think can be confusing is just when we levy that 1% that we're allowed, which of course is well below cost of living, or just, you know, just normal inflation, we get a very small sliver of that. If I recall correctly, close to 60% goes to schools of that 1%. Another chunk goes back to King County. So to your point, when we levied that 1%, we got a total of $300,000.
In new, in, that's the 1% increase, yes.
So it, that, that doesn't solve the problem either. So I believe I can open the public hearing at this point. Okay, good, looking for approval here. So we're going to open it and then go to public comment, I think. Do we have public comment?
There's no public comment.
Did anybody want to sign up that didn't? Okay, then we will go to online.
Okay, any pre-registered online commenters, please raise your hand. Mary Victor?
Hello, this is Mary Victor, 24 years in Samamish. I wanted to thank Director Finance, Vicky Carlson, for the excellent presentation she's done, and for the city's flexibility in looking at what to do with all the cost fees and services and trying to reduce them as much as possible. I know it's a very hard job. Also, in attending the water and sewer district meetings for the last, since 2015, I know how hard they worked to try to provide great services, including through the bomb cyclone storm with their people that need to live in the city and don't have affordable housing, and then not increasing rates for people. So slapping a 6% tax on them is pretty hard, but I, I really don't think we're at a point where we can do other things. In all the meetings, I have listened very carefully, and I haven't heard how the tax, the 6% tax on stormwater is going to go, because I believe the stormwater management fee, which is a fee, not a tax, which is collected by King County, along with people's property taxes, that's at about $475 per structure this year, for per household, and that's been going up about $25 in the last four years. So like a 6% tax on that would be almost $30. But what I'm, the reason I'm asking that is if you have a tiny, tiny little structure, like a garage or a small historic home, and you have a giant mansion, you pay the same fee, 475, and I don't know if that's how it's going to be taxed, if there's a different way to do it, I just don't underst, I mean, the city, the way that they bill for stormwaters through the stormwater management fees, and then there's also parts of the city that don't get any direct stormwater management, so I was just wondering about that. But even though I'm not happy to see the tax, I see that there is no other opportunity to get away from it. I'm happy that you're going with the straight 6%, because I think the amount of time and effort to take to get it set up for the first year through all the utilities is, is very time-consuming. I think that's important to do, and I don't think you can go with less. And then it seems to be the way of the future, that what we're going to do is reduce services and tax more. The one thing that the fiscal sustainability community, or the team of people, they were not allowed to look at housing and how having a successful town center could help with that. So I hope that you'll incorporate those comments in as well. But thank you for the information on the utility tax. I think you have to go ahead. You have a financial imbalance, and there's no other way to get out of it. And even if you get parks metropolitan district, you're just literally taxing people more. Thank you.
I will now promote the second commenter. Nav Otel?
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Nav Otel. I've lived here for 34 years. I'm here today both as a utility customer and as a Samamish Plateau Water Commissioner to express my concerns about the proposed 6% utility tax on water and sewer services. I don't disagree that Samamish has expenses that are growing at a much faster rate than its revenues. I worked for the city of Bellevue for 30 years, doing the city's long-range financial forecast, developing general fund budgets, and as part, and as part of the city's leadership team. We wrestled with similar issues. So I understand the challenges before you, but I ask you to consider if a 6% tax on an essential service such as drinking water is the best solution for the vitality of our city. What I can tell you is that there are already a lot of rate pressures on our customers. We are making significant investments to ensure that Samamish residents have safe and reliable supply of drinking water. Right now, we're in the process of designing a treatment plant to remove PFAS, the phorepochemicals. That plant is going to cost over $20 million. Depending on the new regulations, we may need additional treatment facilities. In addition to, to that, we need to make sure that there's adequate supply to meet the city's growth. So we are also building additional storage, estimated to cost almost $30 million. That's just for the water utility. For the sewer utility contract with King County for wastewater treatment, per the latest forecast from King County, costs to our customers will go up by roughly 12, 12.5% every year for the next six years. That doesn't include the cost to manage the sewer system in Samamish. So layering a 6% tax on top of these costs is going to be a hardship for our customers, I will tell you. I'm asking you to consider two things. One, please reconsider the size of the tax increase. A 3% tax on water and no tax on sewer will generate considerable new revenue for the city, and those revenues will increase automatically, without you having to do anything, every year when utility increases its rates to pay for those costs I mentioned earlier. Most important, this will provide some actual data on what kind of revenues you might generate from this tax. The second is to look at this utility tax in the context of a franchise agreement. There appears to be a lot of misinformation about what a franchise agreement is. It's really an interlocal agreement between the district and the city. I don't know if I mentioned earlier, but I was the director of utilities for Bellevue for over 13 years. We provided water, sewer, and services, not only to Bellevue, but also to Medina, Clyde Hill, and Yero Point. We had a franchise agreement with each of those cities, which was mutually beneficial in coordinating and collaborating on right-of-way permits, abandoning facilities and removal of fire hydrants and capital projects, just to name a few. I appreciate your time and consideration for, of the impact of your decisions on the water and sewer customers. I look forward to follow-up discussion with you on both of these issues.
Thank you, Nav.
I will now promote the third commenter.
Hello, City Council, Paul Stickney, Samamish. You enjoyed the presentation, the council questions, the two last, the public comments. And I have followed the budget in Samamish since starting to attend meetings regularly in the fall of 2013. I'm not going to talk too much about some of the fundamental paradigm shifts that have occurred over that time period. I may or may not send in some information on that as time goes on, but when the fiscal sustainability folks met, they sort of didn't have the, the task or the opportunity to sort of go back and look at the history of how things got to, to where they are. But setting that aside for a second, I want to echo Mary's comment about stormwater. Roughly speaking, and I may be a little off on this, but adjusting for annexations and the size of our, you know, geography now, our stormwater revenue for our city utility was roughly $4 million a year, if you would have added in Cloughany, back about 10, 11 years ago. It's now jumping up to 12 million, and that's a significant increase in rates across the board and is forecast to go up. So I have a little reservation about the magnitude of 6% on top of stormwater that's already increased significantly. And to Councilmember Trine's questions, it's hard, it's a little bit squishy to try to figure this out, so I'm just going to ask something. I pulled up the council retreat slide deck, and there are three statements about the 4.5 million reduction in the 2025 and 2026, you know, budget. 2.1 million of general fund. It would be interesting to see, and I'm not an expert at this, but it would be interesting to see, were those true cuts in existing spending, or were those things that were unspent that will remain unspent? Because the next two seem to be in that second category. There's 3.4 million salary reduction through vacancies for jobs that are not going to be filled, and 1 million for vacancies in the police contracts. So yes, those could have been filled, and not filling them will save, but it wasn't necessarily a cut, and that's the way the city operated for a while. So I'm interested, were there any monies being spent on actual programs or in individuals that, that were cut? Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Paul.
That's all for online public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll remind the public that this is an open hearing until, well, I think it's March 18th, so there's a full month to get your comments in, and I encourage you to do that. It's important that, again, we hear from you and get your feedback. So I'm going to move on to unfinished business, but only if I can read what's next. So continue discussion. Setting and implementing the Affordable Housing in Lew fee as required by updates to SMC Title 21 Development Regulations. And I believe we have David Pyle and Evan Fisher to assist us in this mission.
Good evening, Mayor. Can I get a confirmation that you can hear me?
Sorry, yes.
Great. So I apologize for not being there in person. I contracted COVID over the weekend, so I am doing this remotely. I'd much rather be there in person, however, just felt like that's not appropriate. So Evan will be providing a quick presentation on the status of the in-law, the, the inclusionary affordability in Lew fee, and will be collecting some feedback, and then we'll be coming back on March 18th for potential adoption of resolution amending the fee schedule and resolution setting up the city's first affordable housing program. Evan?
Great, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, David, for staying home. I'll go ahead and dive right in. I'm Evan Fisher with Community Development, and as David said, tonight we'll be revisiting the Affordable Housing Fee. Tonight's meeting is Part 2 of 3 to implement the city's Affordable Housing in Lew fee as part of its new mandatory, mandatory affordable housing program. On January 14th, the council received an introductory presentation, discussed aspects of the program, and provided staff with feedback. Tonight, staff are returning with its recommendations based on the feedback heard in January and are asking for any further direction or edits. On March 18th, staff will bring forward two resolutions for the council's approval to formally implement the Affordable Housing in Lew fee. As a reminder, this work comes as a first step in implementing the new policies in the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan aimed at providing housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community. Housing Policy 3.6 directs the city to implement a citywide inclusionary zoning program to require or incentivize affordable housing. To implement Housing Policy 3.6, the city amended its development regulations to include Chapter 2110 Mandatory Affordable Housing Program. These regulations were adopted, along with the 2020, 2024 Comprehensive Plan, and are now in effect. The city's program requires that at least 10% of new housing units be developed at 80% of the area median income. Depending on the number of units of the proposed development, the affordability requirements will be met either by paying an affordable housing fee in Lew, or building affordable units onsite, or as specified through a development agreement. To further the goal of achieving more affordable units, SMC 2110 includes exemptions for units at 1,000 square feet or less, as well as garage conversions or internal subdivisions of existing structures. The fee amount generated, the fee amount is generated using a model developed by Arch that utilizes local housing market data and analyzes several middle housing typologies. The fee is calculated based on the total gross floor area of a project and amounts to $34.45 per square foot. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see one example of the fee being applied to a sample project. This example looks at three new townhomes at roughly 2,700 square feet, resulting in a fee of approximately $275,000. I'll note that Arch's market analysis shows that townhomes of this size sell in Samamish for roughly $1.42 million. During the meeting in January, staff asked the council a series of questions about the Affordable Housing in Lew fee to help develop policy language for the program. The following slides recap those questions and the council responses, and provide staff's recommended policy language to be included in a resolution on March 18th. The first question asks if the council believes that the fee should be determined using Arch's model, and if the fee of 34, 45 is appropriate. Council responded yes to both of these questions, and staff's recommended, recommended policy language reflects that the fee shall be determined using Arch's model, which shall be maintained and updated regularly by Arch. While not stated in this policy language, the fee amount will be considered through a separate resolution on March 18th that will add it to the city's fee schedule. Next, the council was asked how the funds should be held and managed, whether they should be held internally or by Arch. The council thought it best to utilize Arch's existing infrastructure and resources and have them hold and manage the funds. Staff's recommended policy language reflects council's direction and further makes the policy statement that the funds are meant to serve as a local contribution to attract and support affordable housing development projects in Samamish. Next, the council was asked if they believe a market factor should be applied to reduce the fee. The council asked for staff to provide a recommendation on this item, but indicated that reducing the fee did not seem necessary. At this time, staff recommend not applying a market factor. Staff believe that the proposed fee is an appropriate starting point, but also recommends close monitoring-- close monitoring of the local housing market to understand if the fee may be slowing development of new housing. Staff suggest providing the city council with an annual report on the local housing market and affordable housing program. The report may indicate if modifications to the program are necessary. Additionally, this annual reporting aligns with the GMA's requirements of a five-year implementation report on the city's progress towards meeting its housing goals. The council was asked how the funds should be used and if there was a time limit on how long the funds would stay with the city before being considered as a contribution to regional projects. The city indicated that funds should be prioritized for projects in Samamish, but it could be appropriate to support regional projects after a certain amount of time. It was emphasized that the council should retain flexibility in this decision. Staff's recommendations reflects that funds should be first used in Samamish. It states that Arch may recommend regional projects if no proposed projects in Samamish exist, but it is at the council's discretion to support those regional projects. Staff further recommend that once annually, any funds that have matured for five years be transferred to the Arch Housing Trust Fund to support regional projects. Lastly, staff recommend that Arch provide the council with an annual update that includes potential local affordable housing projects, a report on, a fund spending report, and a progress report on any funded projects. That concludes staff's recommendations. Before we open it up for questions and discussion, we'll look ahead to our next meeting on this topic on March 18th, where the council will be asked, where the council will be asked to approve two resolutions. One that sets affordable housing fee in lieu policies based on the policy statements heard here tonight, and the second to add the fee to the city's fee schedule. And on the screen, you'll see what we're looking for from the council tonight. First, does the council believe the proposed policy language accurately reflects your direction, and is there anything that we should edit or add?
And thank you, Evan.
Yep.
David, did you have anything to add at this point? Okay. So, council. I'm looking for my little board to light up. There we go. Councilmember Stewart.
I just had a couple of questions, kind of looking at the policy language, and I don't know if I just missed this, but did we address if a house has to be rebuilt? And I can think of two scenarios. One is somebody decides to tear down an existing structure and build another one. Would the fee then apply to that? And then the second scenario would be what if the house is damaged or destroyed by, you know, fire, natural disaster, or something like that? Would a fee apply in that scenario?
David, do you want to take this one?
Find the mute button. I'd have to go look at the code. So those items were already addressed in the city's new code related to affordable housing, which we just got word is now fully published and online, so you can go read that there. But we will happily go look at that tomorrow morning and get back to you with a response.
Thanks for that. Because I feel like, at least personally, if a house gets destroyed and needs to be rebuilt, I don't know that we should be charging a fee. But if somebody decides they want to tear down an existing structure and build one, especially a bigger one, then maybe there should be some sort of a fee imposed. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Yeah, I just had a question on the five-year rolling balance transfer. Is it possible to, like, once that comes around, to assess how much we have into it before we just, like, pass it to Arch? Like, can we, you know, just to assess how much we have, is it worth holding on to at that point?
One thing we could do is attempt to craft the policy language that requires that we, when we brief council on the status of the program and the funds and the account, that the council needs to make that, that our goal is to, you know, use the funds, obviously, but that if we're close to a certain amount, that we might want to use a following year, that, you know, possibly we hold on to the funds. And it would become discretionary, you know, for the council, that upon delivery of, a receipt of a presentation about the status of the program and the funds that have been collected, that the council could then choose to send the funds over to Arch as a supplement to the Arch Housing Trust Fund.
Yeah, that would be great, because I think it's really important. Like, if we have enough funds, say, to build a unit here, I'd rather do that than pass it on to Arch and have it built somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. David or Evan, do we have any idea, any kind of projection of what we can expect this fund to amount to? Or is that kind of a wild question to ask? You know, I'm asking you to look in the crystal ball, but have we any idea of what, how big this fund could become, or how big it would have to be in order for it to be of use in a project in Samamish? Or is another way to say, if we're going to use it in a project in Samamish, any donation of funds to affordable housing is welcomed?
So let's say we had 40 new homes, new single-family residential homes, and it was under the traditional development type that we see at 4,000 feet. That's 160,000 square feet. If these were individual projects, or these were projects that fell in small short plots, you know, that they're, they weren't large projects that required that the units be built, then if we multiplied that at, Evan, was it 34, 46? I'm sorry, Evan.
Yeah, 34, 45.
34, 45. It would give us $5,512,000. And that's not an unrealistic outcome. It really depends on how the development industry takes advantage of the exemptions that we've added to that code section, and whether or not they are willing to start to build other products that they traditionally have been unwilling to build in the city. I think that everyone can agree, we have lots of large, single-family homes, but what I've been hearing people really wanting are accessory dwelling units, townhomes, you know, alternative types of housing that really can provide a bit of a different lifestyle. So we have the current exemption set at 1,000 square feet. So if somebody was to build a triplex on their property under middle housing, which they can do in those areas that are not part of an HOA or covenant, as we've talked about, and they were to build one 2,500-square-foot unit and 2,000-square-foot units, they'd only be paying the fee on 2,500 square feet, yet they would be achieving 4,500 square feet of marketable floor area. So there are multiple variables here, and it really depends how the industry responds. We are hoping that this fee bundled with all of the other flexibilities, keep in mind that with this fee, we've also created a very flexible and fairly open middle housing overlay, and that property owners can do quite a bit more, they have many, many more alternatives, what they can do with their property than they used to. So, you know, we kind of see this on balance, that they're kind of given this flexibility, yet at the same time, they're still required to provide affordable housing in the city. And if we can get a few thousand-square-foot units in addition to some larger units, then we're starting to achieve our goals. So we're hopeful that this would result in funding that we can use for real projects, like, for example, if we were to collect that much in the first year and, you know, partner with the Samamish Presbyterian Church to build a, you know, a project on their property, and it was a local share, and they were able to get some other housing philanthropy dollars to go along with that, that that might be a good outcome.
So it could be significant if this is an option that somebody developing a piece of property decides to do, if they decide to opt for a fee in lieu instead of the other options that they may have.
Keep in mind that they're only eligible for a fee in lieu with fractional units of less than 0.5. So, yeah, if they have one, so basically, it's one to four units on the property, they're able to pay the fee in lieu. However, the way the code currently reads, anything at 0.5 and up requires that they build one of the units as affordable. And we're going to be coming back with a few minor code amendments, and we might want to talk through how that works, because we've identified that it kind of creates a no-go zone, if you will. For example, if you're building 0.5, 0.6, 0.7, and you have to build, you know, seven units, you have to build one of them as an affordable unit versus building 10 units and one of them is an affordable unit, there's a difference there. So we've been rethinking some of those initial code decisions we made, and we might look for a few very small refinements in how this is applied when we come back this spring with the code amendment package following adoption from December 10th.
Okay. All right. Thanks, David. Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to echo Deputy Mayor Lamb's concerns about the five-year fund rollover. My understanding is some of the utility of this fee is that the city could then partner with nonprofit builders to really target those lower AMI bands, and that would require some critical massive funds. So if development is slower than we expected or hoped, I would, I just want to try and avoid the scenario where we have some money but not quite enough to get over the hump and actually develop something in the city, which I think is what we're trying to get at. So the flexibility you mentioned, I think I'd be really interested to see the policy recommendation you have.
Thank you.
Helpful feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trine.
Hey, David, we got some information from the Master Builders Association, and one of the recommendations that they made in there, or made a request, was to go from 1,000 and bump it up to 1,500 square feet, that those would then be exempt from this fee in lieu. So I'm just, somebody, I mean, somebody who lives in about 1,300 square feet, you know, 15 sounds pretty big, sounds nice. 1,000 seems a little small. So, you know, if you gave a break there, what's the give and take there? Unintended consequences, the consequences of changing that from 1,000 to 1,500?
Yeah, so we, if you recall, we did talk quite extensively about the exemptions right around December 10th, when we were adopting these regulations. And it's a tricky one. You know, on the one hand, we want to use this as a tool to really drive builders to smaller units, but if you go too small, then they might just not build at all, or they might just choose to build large, single-family homes again. So raising it to 1,500, you know, seems like it's more in line with an actual marketable townhome unit. 1,000 square feet happens to be the same size as the accessory dwelling units, which is kind of why we parked it there, because we have added accessory dwelling units as middle housing typologies in our code. But if you increased it to 1,500, it would still include accessory dwelling units, and those would still be limited to 1,000 square feet under a different code section. You know, it's a very easy change to make in the code, and, you know, if you, if you all, if you had a few friends that wanted to direct us to bring that back for consideration this spring with our code amendment package, you know, we could bring it back, and you could open that up and decide if you wanted it to be 1,000, 1,250, 1,500. You know, there are give and takes. I think for us, the biggest thing we're trying to do is, it's a carrot and a stick, right? We're really trying to get developers to decide to build something other than large, you know, 4,000 and 5,000-square-foot, single-family homes. And it's really difficult. Developers tend to want to build what, you know, it's a business, I'm not faulting them, and they tend to want to build what will bring them the most revenue, especially with the cost of land.
Thanks, David. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from council? And if not, I'll just add a couple of quick things, just as far as, I had thought five years was maybe arbitrary, and that seven might be better. However, I really like Deputy Mayor Lamb's approach, which gives us some flexibility. I also want to be careful that whenever we say we would build, we never build. We would, we would partner with somebody, and they're going to build it. So I just think we have to be careful about our language at times, so that people understand that we actually don't build anything at all, at all. So finding those partnerships and making them accretive is certainly what I think we want to do. Oh dang, there was another point. I'm sure it was brilliant. Shoot, it's gone forever. Maybe it'll come back, who knows? But I think that's probably enough to go on, and we can move on, unless, oh, sorry. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. I was doing a little research, and I do like the idea of us reconsidering the 1,000 square feet. If you look at, like, the average size two-bedroom townhome, it's closer to 1,200. And I think, again, while we want to encourage ADUs, I think we also want to encourage other types of affordable housing as well. So I think it would be interesting to get a little bit more data on, you know, is 1,000 square feet the right breakpoint, or is 1,200, or 1,250, or 1,300, or something like that, a better breakpoint to actually encourage more than just accessory dwelling units? And then the other thing that I think we should probably look at longer term, we got to get this rolling, but to also have graduated sort of breaks for more, like, affordable at lower levels, right? So we have this 80% AMI. Could we give additional carrots if they built affordable units at 60% AMI, or something like that? And again, I think we got to get this rolling and see how it goes, but we should keep that on our radar to see what we might have to do or what we could potentially offer to drive some affordability at even lower levels. Thanks.
So, great comment. We do already have in the code an allowance that one 50% unit counts as two 80% units, I think is what it says, and I'm actually looking through the code right now. We'll get back to you on that one, once I have time to take through the code. But I, you know, we actually have a developer that's asking about that right now. They're interested in learning more about how that works.
David, I'm so disappointed you don't have that memorized, I have to say. I just, I mean, come on.
It's in the code. I'm working on it.
Thank you. The thing that came back to me, actually, because Councilmember Stewart helped me get there, it was the number of comments that we're starting to see from developers that are quite unhappy with this, this charge, this extra fee. And so I do think it's worth taking a look at, because I don't know that we know the answer. And the other thing that concerned me a little bit is it wasn't clear that they'd had an opportunity to really talk to Arch or work with Arch. I don't know that they actually do that, but it occurred to me that there could be some benefit in bringing those parties together to some extent, so that there was at least a shared understanding. But perhaps you can enlighten me. Have they, do they talk?
So I did, as part of the process, back in March and April, there were meetings with the Arch Middle Housing Affordability Work Group, and I did attend those meetings. And during those meetings, I did ask Arch staff that, you know, you really need to reach out to master builders. What Arch did was they used a panel of stakeholders that included a panel from the real estate industry, a panel from the building industry, and a panel from the finance industry, if I recall correctly. And they brought all those individuals together, and they, including members of master builders who were on the panel, is the response I got from Arch today after seeing that letter. And I think one thing to keep in mind, that the Arch letter sort of loses sight of, is, or excuse me, the master builders letter loses sight of, is that there is an enormous amount of flexibility given to property owners and developers with our middle housing overlay, and that with that, it's considered basically like a rezone, that HB 1110, whether they agree or not, our legal has found, and we have read, and other cities have found, that HB 1110 explicitly says that a city may, as part of granting additional flexibility and density, charge, create an inclusionary affordability requirement. So on the one hand, you know, the builders, you know, are getting all this flexibility, but on the other hand, we're wanting to make sure that we're not losing sight of one of our objectives in providing, in the builders creating and delivering affordable housing. And, you know, Redmond has a similar program that we do, Bellevue has a similar program, Kirkland is working through their program. So it's not unheard of, and in fact, it's something that is seen as really beneficial to trying to offset the impacts from market rates, real estate development, which creates barriers to lower-income families getting access into the, into the housing market, right? So if everything that's built is the maximum square footage, and is the maximum price per square foot, and it's all luxury, how are other, you know, income groups able to actually break into the real estate market and afford to buy a home? These are people's homes we're talking about. I understand that it's also a business, but we're really trying to find the balance of allowing the flexibility to the developers so they can build different things and more things, but at the same time, not lose sight of the fact that we also need to consider affordability.
Okay, thank you. So... Okay, thank you. So, if there's no other comments, do you feel like you got your questions answered? You had two questions, I thought.
I think so. I think we got great feedback.
We got great feedback, okay. Well, I will take that. I'll take that as a win and move on, and we can move to new business.
Thank you.
Which is the presentation with David, Matt, Jeff, Town Center Plan and Code Amendments, SEIS, scope and public comments received. Thank you.
See, thank you, Mayor. My name is Matt Branmire. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development. I'm looking for Jeff online, and then we also have David again. Jeff is going to lead the discussion and the presentation. Is Jeff?
I do not see Mr. O'Reilly on the list.
Is someone giving him a call?
Yes, we're reaching out to him right now.
Thank you. And Matt, do you have the deck, or does Jeff have it?
Jeff has the deck.
Of course he does.
Is there a Matt Campbell, maybe?
Mayor, if I may, offer what we might do while we're waiting, is if we want to go to council reports now, we could do that while we're getting, getting ourselves ready for this new business presentation.
I think we could do that, and they will no doubt be scintillating. Would, Mr. City Manager, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick items, which I think council will appreciate. We got word today that Sammamish officially recognizes a tree city for 2024. This was part of the work plan for last year, and so we're excited to actually receive that designation, and we are continuing to work, and we'll be applying at the end of this year for designation for 2025. Obviously, it's based on a number of standards and criterias that we would have to meet. But I think now that we've hit it the first time, I would expect we will continue to do so as we move forward. One other quick piece is that we discussed previously the K4C, who sits on K4C, but we forgot to actually designate who is going to be part of that group. And so just looking for council to self-designate who is going to participate on our behalf, so we can let the K4C folks know. So just if we can take a quick moment, is it Councilmember Roshin and Stewart? Councilmember O'Farrell and Councilmember Stewart? Okay, fantastic. Just want to, that's great. Thank you so much. We will let the folks know at K4C. I also want to remind and let everyone know that tomorrow is the Legislative Action Days for the statewide Cities Association, and the trio of Mayor Howe, Councilmember Gupta, and Councilmember Stewart will be joining me down in Olympia, and we will be talking with our colleagues and advocating with our delegation for legislative priorities, as a packed two days of running around and multiple meetings, given that our delegation runs in the number nine, which is a lot of meetings to try to schedule and squeeze into a day and a half. So we look forward to good dialogue and sharing our priorities with our delegation down in Olympia, and hoping for positive results while we're down there. With that, that's all I had from the City Managers Report. I know there's one item on here, and I know Mike was going to do it, but I can probably pinch-hit for him if he is not, oh, there he is.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, council. Mike Sugg, Supervising Management Analyst in the City Managers Office. As Scott mentioned, there's a letter attached to your agenda tonight, which Mayor Howe has signed. King County Cities Climate Collaboration, or K4C, had reached out to Mayor Clark, asking for her signature on the letter that's on your agenda, which requests support for the Recycling Reform Act. The Recycling Reform Act is a made-up-of-House bill 1150, and companion bill, Senate Bill 50284, is essentially the same piece of legislation as the RERAP Act last year. This is on council's legislative priorities as an item that you have supported. And so Mayor Howe, because of the short turnaround time and alignment with council's priorities, signed the letter, and it is on your agenda tonight, as per your council rules, to follow up on it. The bill establishes an extended producer responsibility program, which shifts recycling costs from residents and local governments to the producers. And it will intend to boost recycling rates, create jobs, and standardize recycling across the state. So with that, Mayor Howe, if you have anything else to add to that, I think that's.
I don't. Does council? If not, I think we're good to go on that, then. Do we have any news? Matt? Anything? Nothing?
Give us a quick moment here, Mayor.
Okay, no, you keep going. We'll keep going.
We're fine. If there are other council reports, we could probably do those.
Yeah, we're going to go. Keep going.
Perfect.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I have a board of health meeting on Thursday, and the main topic of discussion is the 2026 through 2031 EMS levy. EMS is primarily funded by this levy, and it expires December of this year. And they are asking for, actually, a rate decrease. It's going from 26.5 cents per thousand to 25 cents per thousand. That would cost the average homeowner of $212. So EMS funds services 2.3 million people throughout King County, and the levy generates $1.1 billion over six years.
And it always passes. Okay, I have a quick report that I can give. I had a brief meeting this morning with the Soqalmi tribe and a representative from a nonprofit that's working with FIFA to discuss just what the opportunities could be forthcoming in terms of 2026, when we have potentially hundreds of thousands of people descending for about 22 days during the summer. There's a lot of opportunity there, but we just want to make sure that things go well. And so Mayor Lou Polly, Mary Lou Polly created an introduction for this Soqalmi tribe, for this organization. And they, the nonprofit that's actually working on just how to maximize the opportunity is going to be creating a guide that's not finished yet. Part of it is, they're trying to work out the FIFA rules for use of logo and things like that, because what we want is that we, for people that come here to enjoy themselves, and to have a favorable opinion of the area. And because, well, Redmond's spending a couple million dollars to have a successful and leveraged opportunity, Issaquah is going to be spending as well. And since we're sandwiched in between, we just want to make sure that we're able to take advantage of this once-in-a-lifetime-type opportunity. So that meeting took place. I had a different meeting today with a subcommittee of Eastside Fire and Rescue, because, as some know, the chief will be retiring at the end of the year. And so as a result, we'll be looking for a new chief, and so we're in the search committee right now, looking for that special individual that can help the organization move forward. It's a unique opportunity. So we're trying to find the right consulting firm to help us find that right candidate to move ahead. And I'm looking at you expectantly, Matt, because I just know you're going to save me at some point. He's completely ignoring me. Are we close?
David?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and run through the presentation. We have the link.
Okay.
Apologize for any confusion here. Second, we locate it. Share my screen. And let me flip to presentation mode. All right. So David Pyle, Department of Community Development. We are here this evening to provide a briefing on the work the city has done regarding scoping for the proposed Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Project. Just a basic background, what is the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Project? Basically, what we're trying to do is bring the plan into consistency with the comprehensive plan, as well as address some of the changes in the city that have occurred. The plan itself states that once a certain percentage of units are built out in the town center, that the city should update the plan. So part of this work is fundamentally following what the Town Center Plan says, and update the plan. Before we continue on, I just want to make sure that everyone watching is aware of the website that we have. Pretty, pretty simple, www.sammamish.us/tcamendment, and we are constantly updating that page with additional information. And we are working to make sure that there are frequently asked questions and other background information available on that. So this evening, we are looking for direction. We're wanting to fully understand the range of what the scope should include. We're at a fairly essential crossroads, where we're going to start to begin to analyze environmental impacts. And we're going to, we're going to need to make sure that we are moving forward with the range of possible changes to the plan and code that the council wants us to move forward with. The project goals stated here, simplify and recalibrate the approach to affordable housing, clarify the Town Center Code. I think we've heard some comments this evening that the, the code itself doesn't always match what the plan is striving to achieve, and to also streamline administration of the Town Center Code. We have a pretty cumbersome process that is used to entitle and deliver housing development and commercial development in the town center. And we believe that, in part, following Senate Bill 5290, but also in following with some of the comments we've received from the community and from the development industry, that, that we really could make some good improvements to the process that's used for entitlement. I won't go through this list, however, we've had several meetings on this, providing background, sort of outlining some of the, the background work that we've done, and some of the, I guess, complexities of the Town Center Code and how it's delivered. Most recently, we, we talked with the Planning Commission on October 17, 2024, about this project, and we will be meeting with the Planning Commission again this Thursday on February 20. So I think this is really important to address some of the comments we've heard, is, where are we? And what is the stage of the project? And as part of stage one, you know, we, we had several meetings as far back as October of 2023, where we were confirming what the priorities were in the project. The next stage is the scoping stage, where we select options. And really, what this does, it just, just sets the bookends of what, what we're going to be studying to identify potential impacts. It's not a decision by any means. And, you know, scoping in and of itself is a, you know, fairly straightforward process. It does not include analysis of potential environmental impacts. That happens later with the actual SEIS that is based on supplemental environmental impact statement that is based on action alternatives. Finally, the, the project currently shows review and approval happening over the summer and into the fall of 2025. And, you know, at that point, we should have the supplemental environmental impact statement done, and we should have identified potential impacts that the decision-makers, the, the Planning Commission, making a recommendation to the city council, who ultimately reviews and decides on what changes to the plan and code need to be made. So the, the environmental impact statement, or the supplemental environmental impact statement, which is what's happening here, is really only a disclosure document. It's not actually a, a decision. The decision is up to the Planning Commission to recommend to the council, and ultimately, the council to adopt changes to the plan and code. Again, what is a supplemental environmental impact statement? In this case, there was in 20, in 2006 and 2007, there was a, multiple iterations of environmental review that were done on the proposed plan, and ultimately then enabled the code. And that was done through a scoping process, a DEIS, or a draft environmental impact statement process, and finalized through a final environmental impact statement process, an FEIS. And when there is an FEIS that has been completed, and when the range or scope of work that is proposed with any update or change is within the range of topics that was studied as part of the DEIS and FEIS, then the, the process under WAC 19711 that is used is the supplemental EIS process. I do also want to point out that this process is really important to address changes in the environment, changes in information. Sammamish is a different place than it was in 2006 and 2007. And again, environmental impact statement is really a disclosure document that is intended to allow for transparent decision-making. The EIS in itself, the supplemental EIS, does not result in a decision. It's up to the decision-makers to take into account what potential environmental impacts might go along with a certain alternative, or a certain proposed action. And it's important to note that a decision-maker, just because there is an environmental impact that is identified as part of an EIS or an SEIS, does not mean that a decision-maker must decide not to take that action. That it really is sort of going into it eyes-open. And decision-makers can choose to apply mitigation measures. Decision-makers can choose to take a lesser of the action. But what a decision-maker cannot do later in the process without going back to the SEIS, the draft SEIS process, is they cannot choose a scope that is, or an alternative that is different from those that were studied, or outside of what was studied. So what, what we're finding is that if, you know, if we set the scope, we are on a path to analyze that, those range of impacts that go along with that scope. And we, we want to be sure that we're not needing to amend the contract to add a new alternative later in the process. So, you know, this, this is a really pivotal point, because we will then engage a multitude of skilled professionals to analyze what the potential impacts are that could go along with the proposed action. In addition to that, the SEIS process, or the EIS process, in this case, it's just a supplemental, provides opportunities for public participation. And I really want to stress that the scoping period, which I want to highlight is not required by state law, the city chose to do that as an enhancement. WAC 19711 is very clear that scoping for a supplemental environmental impact statement is not required and is optional. So the city chose to take the extra step to reach out to the community, to make sure we were getting feedback on the range of the action, to make sure we better understood where some of the impacts might be, or where some of the challenges might be, or where, where some of the, the, I guess, say, the, the complexities in the project might be. So scoping is important, and we really wanted to use it, and we also wanted to engage the public and make sure they were aware. And to the commenter who's identified that there were 200 comments, we're ecstatic. We're really happy that people are getting involved, and that's important. And that's one of the reasons why we chose optionally to do the scoping, which is not required under WAC 19711. So I guess going finally into that is, the, if there's one thing the public can take away from this, is that the best point in the process to engage is with the actual issuance of a supplemental environmental impact statement. With scoping, the city is, and the consultant team is really reviewing the comments. And the comments are there for the council to review, and the Planning Commission to review. And it helps form their understanding of some of the challenges with the, the project. But the real point in the process where we want But the real point in the process where we want the most public engagement is when we actually issue a draft supplemental environmental impact statement. And this is the document that, you know, will be, I, it will identify the action and it will go through all of the elements of the environment as listed in Washington Administrative Code, section one nine seven eleven. And we will go through those elements of the environments and identify what impacts might go along with the action. Then what the the public is asked to do or stakeholders are asked to do is to provide feedback to us on whether or not we we missed an impact or whether we missed something or whether the, whether the, or or if the analysis was not adequate. But at the end of the day, the only thing that is required is that the analysis is considered to be adequate and adequately addressed the range of impacts that could go along with a proposal. So that the decision makers can make sure they're going into something eyes open and can then choose which action to take. So again, the SEIS process, and I, you know, I've heard, I read many of the comments. I've I've seen, I've actually read all the comments. I've seen, you know, the, or I I've heard comment this evening as part of public testimony. And I think it's really important, again, that we're just here establishing the scope. We haven't even moved into the realm of identifying impacts and drafting the actual draft SEIS. So, you know, for for everybody who's who's saying, you know, that we didn't identify the fully address impacts, that we are not compliant with the GMA, that we're not compliant with state statute. We haven't gotten there yet. So hold those comments. You know, I I understand your your interest in wanting to get moving with this, and we're we're going to be doing that. And over the next few months, you're going to see a lot of activity on this project. So again, we're here to establish the scope. That's currently where we are. Then we move into identifying impacts and finally proposing mitigation that might go along with those impacts for consideration by decision makers. You know, then then continuing down the process, we will disclose findings. And that is where we issue a draft SEIS, where we solicit public comment and where we, you know, people want to meet with us, we're happy to meet with them and talk through the documents. And there'll be another opportunity to utilize the the comment portal. We ask everybody to please submit their comments through the JotForm portal. I know that some people chose to use alternative methods during the the last round and makes it really hard to keep track of comments when we get them through all different channels. And we really appreciate people using the JotForm that we have online for the submitted comments. Then finally, we issue a final SEIS. That will probably happen sometime in the early summer. And then we will prepare the the draft plan amendments and draft code amendments, which we will route to the Planning Commission and City Council for review over the summer and into the fall. I just wanted to, you know, highlight the the steps that we took that exceed the requirements of state law. So, you know, the basic requirements for issuance of a determination of significance which triggers an SEIS is that we post it to the Seattle Times, that there's a legal notice goes out, the CIPA Registry posting that it's mailed to agencies and emailed to agencies. In addition to that, we dug into our system to try and find the contact information for potential interested parties. We created a webpage. We used our GovDelivery service for all of the email, email addresses that we'd collected through previous outreach. We created a message that went out to some of the stakeholders that participated in discussing potential changes to the plan, the property owners in the town center. We we sent it again to the Open House registrants. We made a social media post and we set up notice boards in town center locations. And we also did a mailing to town center property owners and owners within five hundred feet of the town center boundary. So summarizing, in addition to comments you've seen that that also summarize, we we pulled together our own summary. Two hundred plus comments, one hundred and twenty three people are sixty two percent concerned about road capacity and traffic, thirty nine percent concerned about school capacity, thirty six percent concerned about infrastructure and utility, twenty six percent concerned about the character of the city and that this project is not in line with the character of the city, twenty four percent raised stormwater and environmental concerns. So the, the, you know, again, this, the scoping process is is really trying to identify the range of issues that should be part of the alternative action and what what should be studied. There were CIPA relevant topic themes which are, and these follow what are listed as elements of the environment under WAC one nine seven eleven. These are traffic and transportation impacts, school and public service capacity, environmental and stormwater concerns, and height and aesthetic, aesthetic considerations. I do want to note that the CIPA SEIS process is not a a vote of public sentiment about a proposal. Rather, it is just following the CIPA rules under WAC one nine seven eleven. It is attempting to, based on a stated scope of work or or an action alternative, is intending to identify the range of impacts that could go along with that to assist decision makers. So under the traffic and transportation theme, we heard concern about increased congestion on two twenty eighth and surrounding roads, inadequate transit options found today. Don't disagree with that. We have a challenge trying to bring transit to our city. Emergency evacuation concerns, we've heard a lot about this in other channels of communication. Do understand the the interest there. Pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure needs, the current roads are car dominated and lack safe crossings, et cetera. And we have steep and challenging terrain that really makes it hard to get around on foot and also in the winter. The next is school and public services, the the concerns about possibility of overcrowding at Skyline and Eastlake High Schools, especially relating to future capacity. So I do want to highlight that the the Town Center is exclusively in the the Lake Washington School District. It is not in the Issaquah School District. So any students that are generated from housing development in the in the Town Center would go to the Lake Washington District. I do also want to highlight that the Lake Washington School District twenty twenty four Capital Facilities Plan, which is available on their website, if you simply type in Lake Washington School District Capital Facilities, that the the school district is has identified a a drop in enrollment and their demographers are identifying across the district, I want to say somewhere around eighteen hundreds students, a decline in in enrollment, about eighteen hundred students.
It's three point three percent over the next five years.
Thank you. So that is directly from their report. It's not something that we provide. That there was concern about strained emergency services, response times for police EMS and fire could worsen with added density. There were concerns about water or sewer and utility capacity and requests for analysis on impacts of existing infrastructure. So regarding emergency services, we are working closely with Smamish, excuse me, Eastside Fire. And we do have meetings set up with them to talk through the scope of work following this meeting and as we start to refine what we're going to study. We also have meetings set up with the Smamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. And they do have water and sewer comprehensive plans that are published to their website that identify the capacity and the forecasted growth in different areas in the city. And we're going to be working with them to make sure that those plans are updated as needed if there is a need for additional ERUs, as they call them, for sewer, for example. And we are working with them closely on this as well. The next theme is environment and stormwater, stormwater runoff and drainage issues, particularly impacts on E-Bright and Zakkus Creeks. The city recently did a study on the effectiveness of our stormwater program, our stormwater manual, as it applies to the town center. I think that's a really interesting read. I won't, I I won't butcher the conclusion, but if anybody's interested in the actual effectiveness of the city's stormwater rules, I think that's a really good place to go for information, and we definitely will be referring to that as part of the environmental impact statement process. Tree canopy loss and impact on local wildlife, including coconut salmon habitat. That, you know, what one of the things we're trying to do is to balance different objectives. It's challenging to allow for, you know, density, but also at the same time, provide open space and trail connections and tree canopy. And we're looking, you know, one of the reasons behind the consideration of taller buildings in a certain area is related to smaller footprints. And if you can get a smaller footprint, that allows for additional open space in the town center. I do understand and and appreciate other comments about, you know, well, if we didn't increase the density at all, well, then we wouldn't have the issue. I I'm hearing that. Air quality and heat island effects from increasing density and the amount of impervious surface. You know, we we would like to create a quality environment that doesn't have these issues. I know there, it's hard to do, it's hard to design. But if we get the right development standards in place that actually implement the plan, we feel like we we have some potential to see some really great quality development. Height and aesthetics, impacts of one hundred and fifty foot buildings on skyline views, shade and shadow and neighborhood aesthetics, completely understand those. Light pollution and glare from taller buildings and increased urbanization. Absolutely understand this one as well. It's not necessarily unique to center. We hear about this in other parts of the city. Comparisons made to Redmond's dense urban core with some arguing that Smamish should remain distinctly suburban. And I think this goes back to our visioning work that we did with the comprehensive plan. And, you know, the statistically valid survey work that the city has done, where we have heard time and time again that people want gathering places, that they want, you know, some, a a city center that they can go to. Now, the question is, how how dense of a city center does that need to be? And what what was previously presented in the Town Center Plan and the code is a good starting place, but we've noted that it's really not attainable or feasible under the current structure of the FEIS and the city's code. We will be definitely be going into more detail on that as part of the SEIS. We did hear from several agencies, and we are working to follow up with them. SAMplat is really interested in identifying what development capacity we're going to add. And, you know, I'm going to take a second here because I think this is an important set of words. I've heard comments from the public about the fact that this would raise our growth target. And this doesn't change, this is not a target. We're not talking about setting a growth target. We're talking about changing the capacity of a planned area in order to help facilitate diverse and affordable housing so that if anything, you know, beyond the two thousand base units needs to be necessarily associated with diverse and affordable housing. And we're working on what exactly that means, but I do want to highlight that this does not change the city's growth target, and there is no plan to change the city's growth target, that we simply are looking at how to adjust capacity in order to start to promote over a long, you know, forecasted timeframe, the delivery of different housing types. The Snoqualmie Tribe simply requested to be in involved, and they had concern about streamlined permitting or exemptions as it relates to cultural and historic resources that could be present in the town center. The Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife had some recommendations for stream buffers and suggested other precautions for development near current water crossings and culverts. That will be part of the environmental supplemental environmental impact statement. We'll definitely be addressing those. So again, going back to the SEIS process, what is an alternative? An alternative is a distinctive course of action outlining a possible approach to project or plan implementation. Currently, we have, in in EIS process uses a a no action alternative as kind of a baseline scenario. What if you didn't do anything? You know, what would the impacts be? And then there are action alternatives. In this case, we are planning to study one action alternative through a supplemental environmental impact statement. And if the city or, you know, if the council chose to add another alternative, there would have to be an additional scope of work added to the the project. It could take a little longer. You know, we we understand that there are at times things that that change and different things we want to study. However, we just want to highlight that under the current project contract we have with the consultant team, it only includes one action alternative. Again, the no action alternative, and in this case, it would, it would be keeping the development consistent with the existing Town Center Plan and the current Town Center Code and the final EIS that was completed in two thousand seven. And this was the preferred alternative from the two thousand seven FEIS. The no action alternatives include, alternative includes a development capacity of two thousand, two thousand housing units at the town center. And I think that's important to note that this is an arbitrary cap on density in the town center, that the city's Town Center Code does allow development in excess of two thousand units, but that the then staff and policymakers chose to limit it through an FEIS to two thousand units. And again, I say this is arbitrary because it was simply a choice that I think was was at the time trying to balance objectives. There are, the existing caps on commercial space would remain in place. The current zoning and design standards that apply would remain in place. The existing Town Center Plan recommend, again, going back to this comment or that I guess this this section of the plan that states that the plan should be reevaluated. And we did include an analysis on this in the agenda bill. So moving into the alternatives, the action one alternative would include, as currently drafted, and again, this is subject to feedback tonight and from the Planning Commission on Thursday, that the, that we would plan for and accommodate up to four thousand residential units in the town center. And I want to be really clear that this is two thousand units in addition to the existing two thousand units that was studied under the Town Center FEIS. This includes a new approach to affordable housing production and also considers raising building heights to one hundred and fifty feet. Now, I want to highlight that this was already analyzed previously during the EIS process in two thousand six and two thousand seven. And there was a comment on this that that was that was accurate that the the then council chose not to take this as the preferred alternative, however, it was studied. And what we're going to be doing is a gap analysis and and an update, trying to identify what's changed from the previous study that was done on this alternative. And it's also important to highlight that the action alternative really sets the bookend, sets the limit on the range of action that the the council could take as decision makers. But what it, what it, what it does is if the council wanted to do, to take an action that was beyond what was studied, we would have to then add another alternative and go back to the supplemental, the the draft supplemental environmental impact statement process. So, you know, if if conversations continue and there's something that changes and we need to add another alternative, we could do that, but we, it will take more time and we will need to go back through the process. So I just wanted to highlight that to make sure we all understood that. Again, the CIPA scoping is the process of identifying the elements of the environment to be evaluated. Elements of the environment are defined in Washington Administrative Code one nine seven dash eleven. If you're curious, you can look that up, simply Google that. And again, I want to again reiterate that scoping is optional on, for an SEIS, that it is something that we chose to do in order to really try and reach out and engage the community early in this process. We want to make sure everyone's aware and has opportunity to follow along from the beginning. Considerations in the scoping document, you know, or, excuse me, in the from scoping include land use, transportation, as we previously identified. as we previously identified. And with that, I come around to the questions that we have for the council that were also included in the agenda bill. And so I'll just go ahead and go through these. Following review of the current proposed town center plan and code amendments scope. In consideration of comment received during the scoping period, what feedback and direction does the council have? For example, should the project scope continue to include evaluation of an increase in study density by 2,000 units for a total of 4,000 units in the town center? An increased building heights of up to 150 feet in the limited geographic area of the TCA1 zone to promote and facilitate diverse and affordable housing? And again, I'm going to recap that. The intent here is that the base density that's allowed in the town center is retained as base density. Someone's by right development density does not change. But if the, we want to offer a carrot that would allow a developer to choose to build 80% and 50% area median income housing. And to do that, we need to consider adding density to, to allow for market rate units to be built alongside affordable units. And we also need to consider other form-based things like our building heights and also things like how we, we ultimately administer zoning in the city. And then finally, what questions does the council have on the process and the role an SEIS has in decision-making? And before we get to that, I'll just go ahead and outline what the next steps are going to be. That as the spring and summer progress, we're going to be developing and publishing a draft SEIS with the action alternative analyzed. There will be a public comment review period, which really, in my opinion, is the best point in time for the public to provide comment on the range of impacts from the action alternative. That's really where you want to provide that comment. Then we will actually be providing responses to all public comments received. That is something that is part of the EIS process is that when comment is received on a draft environmental impact statement or a draft supplemental environmental impact statement, that comments that are received on the adequacy of that review are actually required to be responded to. There is no requirement that comments received during the scoping process are responded to. And those comments during scoping are really intended to try to inform decision-makers on if the scope is adequate or appropriate. And then finally, we will develop and publish the final SEIS, incorporating the draft supplemental environmental impact statement feedback. And this will happen likely in the summer. And alongside that will be plan amendments and code amendments that will be brought to the planning commission and the city council. So I'll go back to the questions for council and I'll offer Matt, who's in the room, an opportunity to maybe fill in any gaps where I might have missed something. And I appreciate your patience with me. I've got a pretty bad case of COVID here and I'm trying to make, make it through this.
I don't necessarily have any gaps to fill, but certainly available for questions. And I think David is too, if we give him a little break.
Well, thank you, David, for risking your life. For behalf of the council here, I appreciate that. Council, I would be looking for your questions and thoughts, but you may need a second to Deputy Miralane.
So thank you, David, for being here this evening. And thank you, everybody who is in, here in council chambers for making comment. Since on the table you are asking about whether or not to continue with the SEIS, my question would be, what if we don't move forward and we just leave it status quo? We're going to keep town center 2,000. How does that affect our, what are the implications for affordable housing throughout the rest of the city?
So, can you hear me? I'm going to make sure you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, great. So that's a really great question. And so now that the city has a citywide inclusionary affordability requirement, we will be making progress on affordable housing out in the neighborhoods. However, affordable housing in the town center would be limited to 10% and 80% AMI going forward, because we have exhausted the affordable housing bonus pool. And the only way that development can gain density is through the TDR program over the by right base density. The challenge that we have is that it's, it's a, it's a kind of an interesting dilemma because if you look through the zones in the town center plan, the TCA, the TCB, TCC and the TCE, TCD is the civic space, you'll note that, that there are maximum densities allowed. And under that table, there is a footnote two that identifies that densities in excess of the maximum can be achieved through, through TDR credits purchased through the TDR program. So what's happening here is that we are telling the development industry that they can build a lot more density in the town center if they can get TDRs. But then we're also setting a limit on the number of TDRs, again artificially, through our interlocal agreement with King County. Now, we do have the city TDR program and we've talked about that in the past. We don't see that as economically viable at this point in time because of the simple cost of land as compared to the cost of land under the King County program. You know, we're, we're here to consider all options, but I will say that, that there is one thing that does need to happen and we would, we do feel like we do need to take it on. That is that HB 1110 requires that middle housing be allowed on all parcels in the city. And currently, the TCE is R1 in the town center. And we would need to amend at a minimum that section of the development regulations to allow what is similarly allowed outside of the, the town center in order to be compliant with HB 1110. When we were going through the process of developing the comprehensive plan and creating the implementing development regulations for the comprehensive plan, we did note that the TCE particularly was not compliant with HB 1110. So at a minimum, we will need to update that, whether that requires an update to the plan. I don't think it does. I think we could just go into the code and allow additional density in the TCE because it's a mandate by state law.
Okay, thank you. That really helps. Can you, I don't know, perhaps in the future, give us some more context for increasing commercial by like 200,000? I'm trying to wrap my head around what that looks like. We had a public commenter saying that it was half of Bell Square. And I don't really have a concept on what that actually looks like. So if you could provide some information, not necessarily tonight, but you know, what that actually looks like in terms of square footage, in terms of like the average, I don't know, bakery or something, or half a Met Market or something like that, that'd be really helpful. So for me, I would continue wanting to study up to 4,000. And that's not to say that I have made a decision on whether or not that is the number I would want the capacity at, but I do want the data. I do want to know how this would impact traffic, land use and everything else that we've talked about since we're at this point. And we are required to look at the town, or it's in the town center plan to look at it every five years. I think it's appropriate to look at it and, and study what the implications are for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, thank you and thank you, David, for the presentation. So I think one thing that I am, I really want to understand is we are not increasing by right, we're not thinking about increasing by right development. This is specifically tied to housing that is delivered with some level of affordability. So if we were to realize 4,000 units in the town center total, that would imply that we had achieved some success in delivering affordable units to Semenage, right? There's no situation where we would have the full buildout of 4,000 units and not have a significant associated affordability. Is that correct?
Absolutely. So, you know, we're, we're, we understand the, you know, interest in wanting to, that if we are to allow additional density, that we want to make sure that that density comes with diverse and affordable housing. I know I've said that, those words a lot, but what that basically means is that anything under the 2,000 unit cap that's there today, that's, you know, mostly in process, you know, we, we have quite a few numbers of units that are in the pipeline, so to speak, in entitlements, you know, whether it's the, most of it is the Semenage Town Center Associates and it's the, you know, the Brownstones West and the Brownstones East and then the, the core commercial that is on blocks five, six and seven. And then there's also development that is on block nine. And between all of those units, you know, we're, we're getting up there. There's also likely going to be another push of development north of fourth that is also in the TCA zone that, you know, will let, probably bring us to the 2,000 unit cap. Following that, the question is, we'll let them. And the way, you know, our, our concept is, is that, well, you could either do nothing and then it would be built out at, at very low density, you know, R8 or R4 in some cases. It's very low by right density when there is no other incentives mixed in. But if you were to allow additional units and you were to change the dynamic related to the King County interlocal agreement for TDRs, we were to consider other inclusionary affordability requirements, you could find yourself getting to, you know, say the next thousand, so up to 3,000 would be required that they are afford, you know, delivered with affordable units. You could, for example, have 25% of the units be market units that are wide open. You could have 25% of those 1,000 units be, and I'm just making these numbers up just to try and convey a point. Please don't take this for something it's not. The second 25% could be market units that are required to be smaller than 2,000 square feet. Then you could require the third 25% to be 80% AMI units. And you could require the fourth 25% to be 50% AMI units. So the carrot is the 25% market and the 25% market size constraint. But what they're also then doing is building the others alongside that. And it affects land economics as well because then a project can start to pencil when there's additional units in it. And then, so that's up to 3,000. Then if you went up to 4,000, you could, you could utilize the city's, you know, TDR program or you could have been to the interlocal agreement. You know, we do recognize that the, the concept of TDRs is at odds with the concept of affordability. Because the developer has to purchase the TDR credits, which are costly, and they can't then turn around and then deliver an affordable unit as part of that. So what you might do is say, okay, we're going to allow the additional 1,000 units on top of that's up to 4,000. But you have to do that first layer of 1,000, then you can go up to 4,000 and you could allow the use of TDRs, but you could do unit, unit size constraints. Again, you can do, you know, 25% open market, whatever that size they want to build. 25% have to be, you know, less than 2,500 square feet and on down, right? You could require that 25% of those units be studio units. You know, it's, it's a, it's trying to figure out how to basically set the carrot to get the development to happen, but also then require on balance, the other restrictions that would result in the product that we really want as a community being delivered.
Thank you. And so kind of circling back on what you were saying, it is also possible that if we were to set the scope and then at a later date, take action and establish a cap of 4,000, the development community, with those constraints, the development community may still say, you know what, those constraints are too constraining and they will not choose to take advantage of those and develop units on top of the 2,000.
That's absolutely correct. What, what we're not interested in doing is creating a wide open by right increase up to 4,000, you know, adding additional 2,000 units of by right market, wide open, do whatever you want. We're, we're not interested in doing that. And our comprehensive plan has multiple policies that speak to that. We've talked to the development community and they understand what we're trying to achieve. We've gotten some mixed reviews, you know, they're, they're not, you know, seeing the dollar signs, so to speak. They're, they're kind of watching and seeing what happens. But we also, you know, it takes a lot to turn the corner to get builders to build smaller affordable units. And we're really trying to find the right mix of tools to achieve that. And that's really what this is all about.
Thank you. And one more thing, in our packet, it mentioned the ability of a private developer to conduct their own EIS. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I think that that is a really important point. If you go into the city's town center code and you look at the density tables and you look below the density tables at footnote two, it identifies that, you know, basically that if you're using TDRs, that the density is unlimited. I mean, that was my point prior is that we're, you know, the message that developers are getting is, oh, well, we, if we get TDRs, we can, we can build whatever we want as long as we meet the development envelope, the setback, the height, impervious surface, all those things. So the challenge is that we have these sort of two, what I'll call artificial caps on development, because the, the zoning and the development regulations are kind of a higher level of, what's the right word, stat, standing, right? They are superior in standing. The development regulations that the city has adopted are superior in standing to a cap that is put in place by a, an FEIS and are superior to an interlocal agreement that we have for TDRs. Now, those are administrative things and the city could choose to, as we're doing here, consider changing the, the cap through a SEIS. And the city, through an administrative function, could choose to amend the interlocal with King County and add additional TDRs. But what the code already allows is that additional density. It is those two, again, artificial caps that are stopping developers from going beyond the 2,000 units. So what could happen is a developer could acquire, you know, this is hypothetical, not likely, I just want to make sure I'm being totally transparent. Not likely, but a developer could acquire rights to property in the city that they would do TDR exchange through the city's internal TDR program, which we have. We have a TDR program, it's just not being used. And they could get additional density through the TDR credit transfers to allow them to build additional units beyond the 2,000 square, the 2,000 unit cap. And what a developer could do, under the city's SEPA rules and under the state's SEPA rules, a developer could, using the city's current town center plan and, and using the city's current development regulations, they could come in and do their own supplemental environmental impact statement that they would pay for, but the city would, would process. And it would be a project-specific environment, supplemental environmental impact statement, which means there's a development proposal associated with it. And it would, it would analyze potential impacts. And ultimately, the city would be tasked with reviewing and approving a UZDP permit application for additional density beyond the 2,000 units. Another scenario, which, you know, of course, you'd have to seek legal counsel on, is, is that a developer could identify that that, you know, unit cap in there allows for, or that the footnote two under the, under the density dimension table in the town center code could allow for additional units. And that a developer could file suit against the city and say, we're not able to, that's unlikely, but could say, we're not able to develop to the, to the maximum density that the code allows. And we, city, you need to allow this and we're going to file a lawsuit against you. And, you know, a potential outcome of that could be is that the city updates the TDR program and allows some additional units and that the developer does a supplemental EIS. So, you know, the, the point that I keep going back to is that the development regulations that are in place allow additional density beyond the 2,000 units that are, that are artificially capped by the SEIS and that are artificially capped by the, by the interlocal agreement with King County for TDRs. And those are administrative steps that, that are different than legislative steps, which is what, how the code is put in place, if that makes sense.
Thank you. That's, that's very helpful. And I just, I want to thank everyone who has stayed here so far. I am very happy that we got so many comments. has stayed here so far. I am very happy that we got so many comments. I think someone said they feel lucky to live in Sammamish. I do too, and it's because we have such a passionate community. And it makes a difference that you commented, it makes a difference that you're here. I hear you about building heights. I think David touched on it, but the idea is, we limit the building footprint to gain more open space. But if building height is a concern, if, if that's not what we want for our community, let us know, because this is not the decision point. Thank you so much.
Counsel? I'm looking for comments, hopefully from everybody. Councilmember Farrell, and then Tree.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to get back to the questions that are in front of us, yes, I'll be interested in getting, as Deputy Mayor Lamb said, wanting to get more data about the extra 2,000 units and the height level. I will have to say that buildings at 150 feet, that kind of, I had to take a sharp intake of breath when I saw that, too. It is something to think about. But I want us to have all the information and I want us to set the right parameters so that we know what we're talking about and we can, can make educated decisions and make this as a city, as opposed to what David just outlined. If a developer were to come in and to do their own smaller version of this, we would have to, as long as they were doing it within the code and within all the regulations, we would have nothing, there would be nothing we could do about it. So I like that we're being proactive about this and trying to get some affordable housing for our city. And I had some questions, but Councilmember Cook took them all. So yes, I, I would like to see us move forward to this and get some more data so we can make an informed decision about how we want town center to continue to develop. One thing that did stick out in my mind, or out of my, I went back and I looked at some previous meetings, which I would encourage the public to do. The planning commission's meeting on October 17th of last year is a very interesting meeting to go back and watch, and it gives you more information about what we're talking about tonight, as is the city council meeting on October 1st. There are also two really good meetings to go back and watch. And they, and I like watching meetings because I can rewind it and go back and rewind and go back. Because a lot of this is very dense information and it's hard to take in. So you can take it in at your leisure and kind of study it. But one thing, it said that the focus of rewriting this is an effort to amend the code, to focus and deliver some affordable housing and to further kind of realize the vision of the original town center plan, which I think that's something that we have to really think about, that there was a vision when this plan was, was originally written. And that, that attachment day talks about it being an opportunity to address current challenges with the town center code that are impacting the community's ability to realize that town center vision. So I, that's why I'm supporting this, that I really want to make sure that originally what this plan was written for, is that what our city gets? And that we can also then get some public amenities and we can get a town center that, that our community is looking for, as opposed to accepting what a developer may give us. Thank you.
Can I add one thing to that? So that, you know, I, I've seen many comments that ask the question, well, why 150 feet? And I think this one is worth commenting on. And so currently, the city's code allows the 80 feet in the TCA. And at 80 feet, what you get is generally what's considered a five over one or five over two, you know, one or two stories of concrete, and then five stories of what's called stick framed. And that's basically a, a building that is assembled of, you know, a bunch of two by sixes or, you know, similar two by tens, that, that ultimately is, is, you know, nailed together and then sided. And it's, it's considered by, by, you know, architects and the building industry to be a, a lower quality building. You know, it's, it's not a legacy building type. And one of the things that we're looking at and we've become aware, have become aware of is that if you get to, to the five over one, so, you know, or five over two, seven stories, if you will, is what they currently could build today. And you, you wanted to go up, that there's kind of a no-go zone. There's like an economically dead zone between 80 feet and in about 110 feet, maybe 120 feet. It really just depends on the building typology. And then if we also want to get, you know, different buildings of concrete and steel or, or mass timber, the state building code recently changed to allow this new form of construction called mass timber, which, you know, when, when bundled with carbonated concrete, it's, it's considered to be a very green form of building and very durable, very fire resistant, seismic resistant, basically performs like steel. We're starting to see a few of these buildings built in the region. And, but in order to, to achieve that type of building, we have to allow the building height to go up because builders just simply won't build it below a certain height because it doesn't financially make sense. So that's just one of the considerations that went into this, is that if we want legacy buildings in the city, they have to be a little bit taller, or I guess a lot taller. I'm trying to diminish that. 150 feet is 150 feet. But I wanted to try and explain sort of the logic behind that. One of the other challenges that we're seeing is the cost of excavation of underground parking. And we're starting to see builders want to do above-grade parking that is wrapped in retail or residential. And that takes up some of the building space, which also makes it hard to pencil. So, you know, it, development is a business. They build homes, they build our homes. We don't build anything, as the mayor said previously. And we need to remember that if we want to see housing delivered to the city in order to provide all the things we've heard about during our comp plan process, et cetera, that we need to find a way to balance everything and, and offer the carrot, but also restrict it in a way to make sure we get what we want.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Tree.
Thank you, Mayor. So I voted against this whole thing since October 3rd of 2023. So question number one, no. We opened up the subarea plan with the purpose and a need to address an issue, and I believe that issue is affordable housing. My problem is, I think it should include all issues, including climate change and a couple of others. So note also to the increase in the height. All we will get out of that is apartments and condos. The plan already allows for the diverse and affordable housing when the comp plan that we've already submitted to King, King County or to PSRC. So this, it's a little bit of a misleading comment to say that we need to have more height so that we can provide diverse and affordable housing. No, our plan already allows for that. As far as the scope, we opened the subarea plan and the scope should include a total rewrite for the cost of this project. And then it also should inform the public of what it's going to cost us to actually do it. Let's see, what else? How about the SEIS? Who should pay for it? And that's a question that I had to myself, had to think about that. You know, should we be buying, should we, the taxpayers, be paying for this SEIS in the first place? And so my question is, no, I don't think we should be doing that. We should have the developers pay for the, and we should have the developer pay for an EIS, not a supplemental. If they're going to increase this to this kind of height and this kind of density, this, what do they call it? High intensity residential. If you're going to have the land use be high intensity residential, which will equal high impact on the environment and the infrastructure of the city, then the, then the developer should be paying for that. And we as a resident, or as the residents should then be aware of that. And there should be nowhere in there that it says that non-applicable comments would be on an EIS then. Question number, so that was two. Let's see, number three was on, are there any components of the current proposed scope that council has questions on? Well, so, so my first thing would be, don't do it. So since that's probably not going to happen, how about, I have some questions. So the first would be traffic, second one would be land use, and the third one would be housing. So those are my three questions. Why, so the first one on, let me go backwards on those, housing. Why isn't housing included in this? And I think even Paul Stickney would agree with me on that one, because we had this argument during our Bluma EIS discussions back a few years ago. Second would be on traffic. Are you going to do traffic just in the town center? Or is this a traffic model plan, master plan for the whole city? And if so, then we would have to reopen up our transportation master plan and poke that baby a few times. Sorry, that was a reference to you, Mayor. Hope you found the humor in that. No, the TMP would have to be looked at unless, unless this SEIS, the supplemental EIS, was just about the transportation slash traffic, walkability sidewalks, trails within the town center. So that's a question I have there, you know, are we, is that what we're looking at for the traffic piece of it? And then I've already talked about the land use. Clearly, the push is going to be for a high intensity residential. And so then my question would be, are we going to require LID standards in there? And then on top of that, as David and I have talked about several times, of course, design standards, we actually have some design standards in the current plan. And so would we be pushing, if you're going to do a supplemental, then are you pushing the new designs, are they just going to go away? Or are you going to have new design standards or enhanced design standards that actually would have to be followed by the developer? So we'd actually get what, what we want. Question number four, what question does the council have on the process and the role of the SEIS in decision-making? Okay, I already know, we already, you've described that and explained that. So last, and I probably should have just started with this, David, because I think you can go back and look at this tape and answer all the questions that I put forward tonight easily. And the public has a pretty good idea where I stand on this. So, but what I really want to just mention to everyone who stayed, thank you, is we need alternative number two. So if, if the council's going to move forward with this scoping, and you're going to present one alternative, I think that's a mistake on our part as a council, as a, as a body. And so I think that you, we need to have a second alternative to present to them. And I, I'm fully aware that comes with a cost. And so, but I also know that this is the largest development that's going to happen in the city. And if you're going to plan for the next 20 years, what's going to happen in this particular area, this subarea, then pay for an EIS and give me a second alternative. Then you might have my support. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. Lots of good questions and comments. Yes, please continue with the study. I would like to see what this means, what the numbers are going to be. And I think one of our main interests for this council has always been housing, so I'd like to stick with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I think getting input from everyone, I think we heard from one of the residents that we need to listen to everybody, and I think that's important. I think you guys raised some great points. I also think it's important for us to listen to our statistically valid surveys and other feedback that we get from other residents, where people are looking for more services, more restaurants, more things in the city, so that they don't have to leave the plateau for everything that they need. And I think that that's part of what we're looking at. When I look at housing, so the costs of housing over the last 20 years have almost tripled in the Puget Sound region on average. They've gone up more than that in the city of Sammamish. In that same period of time, Sammamish residents have birthed almost 12,000 babies. So just when you think about, we've created 12,000 new humans. They need to live somewhere. They don't stay at home forever. I mean, some might, but generally, that's not what we're looking for. We also lack, as Paul Stickney has pointed out on many occasions, we do lack a diversity of housing types. So a lot of people, once their kids graduate from high school, they leave the city because there's nowhere to downsize to. So not only do we not have those starter homes for our young people or our young families, and we don't have places like condos for those first-time buyers to be able to break into the market, but we don't have places for people to go once their kids leave home and they want to stay in Sammamish, right? If you've lived here for 20, 25 years raising your family, I don't necessarily want to leave the city. But I also don't necessarily need to live in my great big house anymore. But where do I go? There just aren't that many options. And so having that place where we can go, where you have services, where maybe you don't have to take care of your lawn anymore because you're getting older and you just want to be able to have that walkability, you want to be able to walk out of your apartment building or your condo and go have a cup of coffee with someone and not get in your car and drive. I think we've already touched on the fact that our, that our school enrollment rates are dropping. It's projected to continue to decline at least through 2028. So I think when we look at the, the number of kids that will be generated in the multifamily dwellings, it's a much lower number anyway, and our, our school populations are already in decline. I know I'm concerned about the environment. That's one of the reasons that I ran for office. Multifamily dwellings are infinitely more environmentally sustainable than building single-family homes, even townhomes, right? The, the multifamily, the condos, the apartments, they have a much smaller footprint, they have more shared walls. Their impact on the infrastructure on a per-unit and a per-capita basis are minuscule compared to the large single-family homes that we get out in our neighborhoods. So when we look over the next 20 years and we look at what we need to have built, we really need to be moving as a society away from 3,500 and 4,000 square foot single-family homes. And we need to be moving to a more urbanized setting. If we want better transit, we need the density, right? There's, there's a relationship here. You're not going to get more bus service if we continue to have to try to pick up people in 750 cul-de-sacs. But if we have density in the town center, we can have a shuttle that runs from the town center down to the light rail. It's just a couple miles down the road, it's about to open up. So we can, we can really achieve some much improved transit options for people. That also reduces the cost, the total cost of ownership. It costs, on average, $12,000 a year to own and operate a vehicle. If I can live in the town center and I, my family only needs one car instead of two, I can save $12,000 a year. That makes my housing a whole lot more affordable. So yes, I would like to study this and I would like to see what those impacts are. In terms of doing traffic studies, whenever we do traffic modeling, just to be clear with everybody, you always do the model and it actually does the modeling for the entire system. So if you add housing units over here and you put that into our traffic model, it reroutes the traffic. It says, hey, this is how we predict that that traffic will change. So we'll see what that impact is on the entirety of the system. Let's see, what else? Oh, and over the last 20 years, since the town center plan has been approved, we've built fewer than 400 units. So even as we look forward and we look at what if, over time, we increase this, it's not like these, these units are going to be built tomorrow. In 20 years, we built 400 units, right? So opening this up actually just gives us those options. It gives us those levers so we can actually achieve the diverse and affordable housing that we, as a society, need. Maybe individuals don't. Maybe there are individuals who are like, hey, I'm good, I can afford whatever. But as a society, that's not where we're at right now. And, and if you look at our youth, I know, I have youth, they're, they're struggling. They're struggling to just find apartments that they can live in, even when they have good jobs. So how do we look to the future and how do we plan for that, right? We're not talking about building 3,500 units next year. We're talking about over the next 20 years, what do we want that to be? How do we have that? We heard from one of you, and I couldn't agree more, there are a lot of amenities that we want in our city. We want pools, we want gathering places. We're not going to get those in our 750 cul-de-sacs. We're going to get those when we can look at that town center area, that commercial space, some of that can be civic space. It doesn't all have to be just businesses. So if we want those kind of places, if we want to have community centers and we want to have those gathering spaces, there aren't a whole lot of other options in our city to put those. So yes, I would like to see us continue with this and get the data so that we can make well-informed, data-driven decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll give my two cents here for a second. So when I saw some of the, like, the 150-foot tower concept, there was a bit So when I saw some of the, like the 150-foot tower concept, there was a bit of gastric distress, I have to say. It, it does make you gas, but then you start thinking about, well, what does this really mean? And then I step back and think, but wait, this is a study. But wait, I don't know what I don't know. How am I going to know what I need to know if I don't study it and figure it out? I'm not opposed to research. I think research is a good thing. I think educating ourselves about what's possible is probably a good idea. And I got a really good answer tonight about, why do you scope big? Why go here? You could scope here and do it tiny, or you could do this. I don't want to have to do it again because I don't want to pay for that again. I want to scope it to here so that we can right-size it as we get information and start to scale it to something that is doable. Someday, Merrill Gardens is going to open. We're going to have people working here, hundreds of people working here at one place. They'll be arranged professions that will be professional to minimum wage. I would love for them to have an opportunity to live and walk to work. That would be awesome. But I want to see a creative solutions. I want to see something like, what if it was more like a dorm? What if there was a shared kitchen? What if, what if we could do something so that a variety of different kinds of folks could live here? But I can't get that if I don't allow the study. If I cripple the study, scale it back, dumb it down, I don't get the data. So I want the data. And we'll go from there and we will spend a lot of time working on it and we'll see what happens. So I'm not making any decisions, certainly. I don't have the data. So hopefully that gives you where I am.
Thank you for all of your comments. If you see on the screen, there are several meetings planned ahead. You see the two February meetings. On Thursday, the Planning Commission will meet. It'll be very much the same presentation and we will talk to them about, you know, some of the issues and the conversations we've been having. Looking forward to May, that is when we expect the, the draft SEIS to be completed and some of the draft plan elements as well, to present to both the Planning Commission and the City Council in that first week of May. And these are tentative dates, by the way. We're trying to kind of project and see where we are in the next few months, including the conclusion of this whole process, but they are tentative. We will keep the website up to date and if anything changes, we will, you know, make a change accordingly to the website. Then you also see meetings June, July, August, the next several months, we're going to be having this, this conversation. David, if you can move to the next slide, please. We also plan the series of workshops. Prior to the May meetings, we will hold a workshop on April 30th, you know, to discuss the findings of the draft SEIS and provide the comments for the record. We'll also be meeting with property owners, partner agencies. Then in July, you see the draft zoning and development code review plan, that would be another workshop. So I appreciate all your comments and all the public feedback that we've received, and we have a lot of work to do in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the, the work tonight. Appreciate it. So if we don't have council reports, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay. Has been moved to seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thanks, David, for hanging in with us. Get some rest.
But stay the heck away.
That's right. Have a good day.